I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Zwicker.
Here.
Ms. Breyer.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
Mr. Person.
Here.
Ms. Palmer.
Here.
Mr. Corman.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is a proclamation for Volunteer Month.
Proclamation, whereas experience has shown that government by itself cannot solve all of our nation's social problems, and whereas volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive nation, and whereas volunteering of one's time and resources is a fundamental part of the community's tradition and is essential to its spirit, and whereas the entire community benefits, directly or indirectly, from each and every act of volunteer service, and whereas volunteers working in our community give their time and talent daily to make a real difference in the lives of our children, adults, the elderly, and the frail, and whereas volunteers can connect with local community service opportunities throughout the City of Renton's volunteer program and hundreds of community service organizations, and whereas the volunteers who give their time and expertise to improve the quality of life for the citizens of Renton are a great treasure and deserve special recognition. Now therefore I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2012 to be Volunteer Month in the City of Renton, and I encourage all members of the community to commit a portion of their time to volunteer service. By volunteering and by recognizing those who serve, we can perpetuate the spirit and vitality of this great city. In witness whereof, I've hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this second day of April 2012, signed Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
I move that the council adopt the proclamation as read.
Second.
The move by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Ms. Breyer, the council approve the proclamation as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I see we have Bonnie Raresit here.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, it's my honor to accept this on behalf of all of the volunteers with the City of Renton and within the Renton community. The Renton community is blessed with dedicated, caring, talented, and skilled volunteer support, and we are so pleased that we can honor their and recognize their efforts this entire month. Just a few facts for you about volunteering in the City of Renton. In 2011, more than 4,611 volunteers donated 62,800 service hours to our community, which I think is just amazing. I've had the pleasure of working with many of these volunteers on several different projects, and they really truly make a difference every single day. As you're driving throughout the city, you'll see a banner that is up. Hopefully, all the volunteers will also see that banner and know how much we're honoring their service throughout the month of April. The first person that you see when you walk into City Hall is probably a volunteer. Our volunteer lobby, the volunteers in the lobby are through the city's clerk's office, and they contribute over 2,200 hours each year. This year alone, our coaches with our youth athletics program have given over 3,000 hours of service, and that's just within the first three months of the year. We have 174 volunteers that are responsible for over 13,300 hours of essential services at our senior activity center. That's 13,300 hours to help us operate the senior activity center. There are over 200 volunteers who assist us in working on boards and commissions, task force, and committees, providing valuable information as and as citizens' perspective. Our Tools on Wheels program that we're very proud of helps to take the obstacles out of volunteering throughout the city. So if there is a volunteer organization who needs some tools to help do a cleanup, we're there to help. And last September, we had 759 volunteers who for one day provided over 3,100 hours in one day. They did over 30 different volunteer projects throughout the community in honor of the 10th anniversary of 9/11. So, in closing, I'd just like to encourage everyone to continue their volunteer efforts, and if they're thinking about volunteering, to give us a call, or go to our website, volunteering@rentonlaw.gov, or contact the Community Services Department by calling 425-430-6600. And thank you again very much.
Thank you very much, Bonnie. Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing, and this public hearing is on the Renton Hazard Mitigation Plan. Mindy, I bet you're surprised you have so many people here.
It's really fantastic. My name is Mindy Matson. I'm with the Emergency Management Division within the Fire Department, and as much as I do wish these people were all here to talk about creating a disaster-resilient community, I suspect they are not, so I'll keep my comments brief. I want to acknowledge right off the bat, you all received a copy of this, at least electronically. We got a big old typo on the front, so my apologies, we caught it, we own it, it will be fixed in the final version, but just wanted to catch it for you before you all caught it on your own. So, let me get a PowerPoint up here really quick. Is there a mouse? Am I missing a mouse? It should be there. There you go. Thank you. So what we're here tonight to do is have the public hearing, and then hopefully have you folks adopt the hazard mitigation plan that we have been working on. A little bit of background, there are several reasons why we need a new hazardous mitigation plan. One is just by way of contrast, this is the old plan, right here, and this is the new plan, right here. So FEMA has created all kinds of interesting things that we had to add to our plan, so it was actually quite a big body of work. It also involved planning through all the departments of the city, so there was a lot of consensus that had to be built. Our plans need to be revised every five years, they're only a five-year plan, and truth be told, we have not had a valid plan since 2009, at which point our last plan lapsed. The reason, the biggest motivation for us to have a hazard mitigation plan, in addition to that it's just good best practices, is that it allows us to be eligible for hazard mitigation grants. The thing about hazard mitigation grants is that they all require a match, and generally that's about a 25% match. So we did talk to all the different departments in the city, we did get confirmation that no one was in a position to offer up the funding for a 25% match, and so the priority went down. We had other things that we were working on, including Howard Hansen Dam, which was just ramping up at that point in 2009. We did hire a consultant to help us with this, Community Services was nice enough to pay for that. We had a public input process that included two public meetings, one was in April of 2009, and the second one was in March of 2010, and then we've had considerable time with state and federal approval of this plan, so that brings us to the point that we're at today. Just to provide you with a definition, and the reason I wanted to include this is just to make sure that you know that this is not a response plan of any type. This is definitely about talking about things before we have disasters and making decisions from a planning perspective about how we best want to direct our efforts. This is the formula that we used, there were individual hazard chapters done for everything that we identified that was a specific hazard for Renton, and then we use this formula to kind of prioritize how high that would come. If we have hazards, we can have hazards that are not a problem, for example, recurrent flooding that takes place in a wetlands area, there's nothing we really need to do to mitigate that. So there's a hazard involved, but there's no exposure, and therefore we wouldn't have risk. It's only when you have hazard and exposure that you would have risk. One of the nice things about this type of planning is it allows us to avoid reactionary-type mitigation actions where we have something bad happen, and then in response, we dedicate a lot of resources to trying to fix that particular problem when it might not actually be the highest priority for our limited mitigation resources. With everything we have to ask, is it worth it? There has to be a cost-benefit analysis as to whether we want to invest to mitigate the risk or if we can live with it. This plan actually spells out what all those matrices are to make those calculations. The plan organization, the first five chapters just basically include introduction, definition of terms, a pretty detailed profile of what our Renton community looks like. It talks about the public input process, which is completed for this draft plan, but it is an ongoing effort, and we will continue to engage the public to talk with us about disaster resilience and what they would like to see and appreciate in a hazard mitigation planning. To that end, we actually have a forum coming up. It is on April 18th. There are flyers over here, and I would invite anyone interested in coming and telling us what you think about disaster planning in the city. That would be a great time, we would love to hear from you and have you join us. So, after the first chapters, it talks a little about adoption and maintenance of the plan, what the goals and objectives are, and then the rest of the chapters are all hazard-specific. And I mentioned before, we identified which hazards were biggest concern for us and used that as our planning assumption. Just to let you know, the input was solicited from within the city through our emergency management group that served to serve the oversight group, and when we needed specific information from departments, those folks were really great about rounding up the information that we need and helping us to set those priorities. And then finally, there's some appendices at the end that are just reference material, maps, lots of good stuff in there. The hazard chapter contents, they have information on the specific risks, as I mentioned. We've prioritized in terms of what are short-term goals that we can achieve and what are longer-term goals that we can achieve, and we've identified which ones we have to throw money at the problem and which ones we can do some mitigation through policy, through legislation, through thinking about how we develop our plans and our codes, and always making sure that we are keeping a sharp eye focused on is what we're doing helping us to mitigate risk in our community. There's also a timeline, and then talks a bit about the goals that the plan addresses, and of course, potential funding sources should they come available. So, as I mentioned, we're here for the public hearing, hopefully this will meet with your approval and it will become adopted tonight, and then we will go ahead and promulgate it out to everyone who has a role in it, needs to know about it. It is available on the city's website, has been for quite some time for comment, and it'll go back up there in final format so the public has ready access to it. Anybody have questions?
Thank you, Mindy. Any questions from council? Okay, this is a public hearing, do we have any correspondence, Madam Clerk?
No correspondence, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I don't have anybody signed up to address the council on the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to address the council in regards to the hazardous mitigation plan?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Corman, that the public hearing be closed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, do we need a motion approving that, or? We do.
We're, I believe we've got, we've got it on the resolutions later.
Do we just do it at the resolutions?
Yeah.
There's a committee room.
Okay, next item is the administrative report, Mr. Covington.
Mr. Mayor, I have no report tonight.
Okay. So we're going to move on to audience comment. As you can see, we have a lot of citizens have taken the time to come out here to address the council, and so we welcome you. I know we've got some in the other room next door, so we're not going to miss you. Those of you, I've got at least 19 people who've signed up on the sheet to address the council, and as long as the council doesn't have any objections, we're going to go ahead and listen to public testimony beyond the normal 30 minutes that the council policy calls for. What I'd like to ask the people to do that have signed up to speak, to please line up over here on this side of the wall, and as we can, you come up to the podium, give your name and your city of residence for the record. You have five minutes to address the council, and the city clerk has a timer right next to her here, and please watch, please watch the timer, because due to the number of people that we have here, we're going to have to hold you to five minutes. So, Elizabeth, do you want to go ahead and start off?
Good evening, I'm Elizabeth Stevens, S-T-E-V-E-N-S. I'm a Renton resident for over 30 years and a volunteer. I've served several years on the Human Services Advisory Council, including co-chair. I'm also one of 6,383 voters that signed the initiative petition. Imagine if the city had been clear with Renton voters on the February 2010 ballot and voters' pamphlet. It read, "Should the City of Renton be annexed to and be a part of the King County Library District, yes or no?" The explanatory statement included, "Renton would provide two replacement library facilities to be paid for at a future date," period. We wouldn't be here today if the city had disclosed, "The Cedar River and Highlands Libraries will be relocated into new buildings to be constructed elsewhere in the city." The city's lack of full disclosure then and now is dividing our city. For 27 years, I have financed businesses and revitalization efforts throughout the state. I'm an advocate for our business community. What I do helps grow businesses, increase tax revenues, and creates jobs. Experience shows that revitalization is successful when it is driven by business owners and private investment. Projects driven by city staff inevitably get embroiled in politics by politicians with other personal goals. Our downtown businesses are hurting, especially with the city's focus on promoting the landing. But moving the library to the Big Five site will not solve our downtown businesses' problems. Revitalization requires more effective actions to increase foot traffic than what the library would generate. I'd like to comment on recent memos and letters by the city and KCLS. One, yes, there's a contract. Contracts are written recognizing that things happen that may require change. The inter-local agreement provides for the ability to amend the agreement. The question is now whether or not KCLS is a cooperative partner. Two, the city still isn't disclosing to you the needed financial data for a sound decision. The March 28th memo from Mr. Covington to Mr. Zwicker states, "While cost estimates are rough, the administration believes that renovating the Cedar River Library building could result in the Cedar River Library costing millions more than developing the Big Five site." And it refers you to Mr. Patacic's letter citing cost estimates not relevant to our specific project. Where are the independent contractor bids for renovating the current building? Mr. Covington's vague statements are counter to the renovation costs cited in the city's earlier library master plan. How can you live up to your fiduciary responsibility without actual bids to understand the true expected costs? Number three, business owners know at some point on a project, you may have to cut your losses and redirect. Just because city staff rushed ahead and spent money on the Big Five site before this issue was resolved, doesn't mean the council shouldn't reconsider direction. In 2011, Councilman Taylor urged the council to not rush the vote to the ILA and to take additional time to collect more information. Contractor bids for renovation had not been provided, and the public was crying out to you to look into this decision further. But councilmembers Breyer, Zwicker, and Parker stated they didn't need further information or time, and pushed to vote through in haste, and funds began being spent in a hurry. The only recourse has been to seek redress through the initiative petition. Councilmembers, you have a fiduciary responsibility to require full financial disclosure before you make decisions. I ask each of you to honor your fiduciary responsibility. I ask you to honor the legal right of the initiative petition process. I ask you to vote tonight to adopt the initiative or to place it on the ballot with mutually accepted language. Give the registered voters the right to determine the location of our beloved Cedar River Library. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Stuart Avery, S-T-U-A-R-T-A-V-E-R-Y. I'm a Renton resident for 17 years. I wanted to start out by indicating that I also regularly volunteer at the Downtown Salvation Army Community Supper, as well as a biannual Single Moms Oil Change Event that takes place at Renton's New Life Church. I have participated in the annual count of the homeless people. My lovely wife Shannon is vice chair and director of Operations of Birthday Dreams, one of our city's many volunteer-driven nonprofits existing to support the needs of our region. Mr. Mayor and city council members, it was June 20th of 2011 that I last spoke in your presence. At that meeting, these chambers were filled with citizens like myself urging you not to take haste, action on relocating the downtown library. Rather, we asked you at that time to better measure the desires of our community. The response from some of the council was that we were a vocal minority and that most of the city residents want the library moved away from Liberty Park and placed downtown near the transit center. I am also here today as one of 6,383 registered Renton voters of all backgrounds, all cultures, and all classes, who have collectively signed the now King County election-certified People's Initiative Petition. For months, our volunteers have interacted with city residents regarding the Cedar River Library. Throughout our efforts, many of the residents who had approved the annexation to King County Library system expressed that they had done so believing that it was the only way to preserve their iconic and nationally unique library downtown. Many now feel misled. The people want you to find a way to renovate or reconstruct our library right where it is. When it comes to library services, either location can be plumbed with the necessary infrastructure to provide the highest and most modern level of services that the King County Library System intends to provide. It can be done. We ask you to honor the intent of the initiative petition and allow for all of your constituents to be given the opportunity to decide for themselves where the library will be built. We would expect the process to be free from the influences of elected officials, the influences of special interests, and biased news reporting. It should be a process that includes open participation at every level, from our city residents, not just insiders. There are no legal agreements this council has entered into that cannot be rewritten or amended. There are no negotiations that cannot be negotiated or renegotiated in goodwill. The city, this is a city that has helped win World War II. This is a city that builds the planes that fly most of our world around the world. This is a city of an intelligent, responsible, and relevant citizens from every social economic class who have rightfully petitioned you. It is not about whether the Ts are crossed correctly or the Is are dotted correctly. It is a matter of whether you will honor and uphold the basic constitutional right for the people to petition their government leadership for change. The city attorney has provided you with his feedback on the petition, and the People's Legal Council has now responded directly to that. The People's Legal Council believes that courts will uphold the intent of the initiative petition. Mr. Mayor, council members, this is a very real and legal process. By ignoring it, you will set the stage for a possible lawsuit bringing much deeper exploration, scrutiny, and possibly longer-lasting consequences. I ask that your contract with the citizens of Renton, which is your oath of office, guide your actions on this night. I thank you for your time and your consideration on this.
Thank you. Next.
Council and mayor, hello, my name is Shelby Smith, I live in Renton. I too am one of the people representing over 6,000 Renton voters, and we come to you to make certain we are heard. We come to share the will of the people with you, our representatives in government. We have obtained the right to a citywide vote. Given the scope of the people's position regarding the divestiture of the River Library, the obvious choice would be to integrate our voice now. Fighting us to the bitter end is not necessary. Moving to adopt the Citizens Initiative Petition would not constitute mutiny at City Hall, as some of you may fear, but would be in aligning with the higher requirements of your office. Adherence to the established principles of representative governance is all you as council members require as justification for correcting your position on this matter. Personally, I want to appeal to your integrity as elected officials. Coming to terms with the prestige and power available to those who have obtained the seat of government must be a continuing challenge. The question must be, to whom do you owe allegiance? The answer is the people as a whole. Those who depend upon council devoted to the higher principles of true democracy, council members willing and able to subjugate their personal and political agendas for the health and well-being of a people and a city. We are not the enemy. We are the people who make up the lifeblood of Renton. We have the authority to protect what we love, what brings us to center. We have the right, the means, and the power to redress a wrong that has been put to us, and we have an obligation to ourselves and each other and our city to correct a plan that has threatened to demoralize and further disempower us. We desire the will of the people in this matter be respected. We desire the heart of Renton be embraced. The River Library is the heart of Renton for thousands of people. Requiring the sacrifice of a beloved icon is untenable. We are not anti-progress, anti-architecture, anti-commerce, anti-downtown, or anti-library in any way. We are not anti-government, anti-future, or anti-Renton. In fact, having asked many hundreds of people during this last year if they would like to see an arts center at the old Big Five site instead of a new library, over 95% said yes. Building us something we would actually benefit from and would enjoy seems to be the alternative to something we do not want. The fact is, we have a choice, we always have a choice, and there's always an alternative. In this instance, we would like you to consider positioning us for actual economic growth and the flowering of our city by building us an arts consortium at the Big Five site. This would fit into the actual desires and needs of our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor of the council, I'm Mark Martinez, M-A-R-T-N-E-Z. I live in the Highlands on Northeast Fifth Street. I want to start off by saying, thanking everybody in the council. We know that you guys have a very hard job, and you're good, honest people that sometimes we disagree with. You didn't volunteer for your job, you fought for your job in an election. It's something that a lot of people won't do, is to run for office, but yet they'll quit to criticize. So, I just want to say, I understand that the hard decisions that you have to make as mayor and city council. Now, I voted to annex into King County. I thought to myself, it's all same tax money to me, comes out of my checking account when I pay my mortgage every month, so it's all the same taxes, and why pay for two sets of employee benefits plans, two sets of accounting books, two sets of maintenance crews, and two sets of the Dewey Decimal System? And I thought, wouldn't it be really nice to get a new library? Wouldn't it be great to have something like the Issaquah Library or the Bellevue Library plopped on top of the river? But there was a crucial piece of information that I, as a voter, somehow missed, and it's those three magic words that really make a difference and probably would have changed my vote, a new location. But I'm kind of beyond that right now. I would like to see the library stay at Liberty Park, but what really brought me down here today is this process. So as most of you know, I spent 10 years in the Marines because I believe in the institutions that make this country what it is. Equal rights, personal and religious freedom, and above all, the rule of law. The law provides funds for our police, for our parks, it provides, it protects individual liberty, and protects the down-and-out. The law is a very, very wonderful thing, until, of course, you get lawyers involved. O.J. Simpson and Michael Jackson walked free while Martha Stewart went to jail, and countless drunk drivers get off for free because some lawyer is able to find a technicality that allows them to somehow escape justice. The law is what put you in your seat, it gives you the authority to make laws and change laws. It also allows citizens recourse when they disagree with decisions you have made. That's what this initiative is about. The citizenry getting together and letting the elected officials know that we disagree with you. RCW 35A says that if initiative is certified, it's either passed as written, or it goes for a vote. There's nothing in there about having the city lawyer approve it or having a council approve it. approval. It does say that if the city doesn't agree, we can go to Superior Court. Now, I would find it personally sad if the city citizens had to sue their own city over an issue. People in this audience are willing to give up grocery money, postpone vacation, and give up date night to fund a potential legal battle. While I'm sure the city attorney's $1.7 million budget could really take the hit, it would mean having to change normal prosecution. I'm sure the city could fund it by other means, by taking money out of other budgets. While I have nothing against the city attorney himself, and I respect his efforts to preserve my rights as a citizen, any money spent on a legal battle, either by the city or by Renton citizens, would be a lose-lose for everybody. In closing, I want to say that the democratic process and the rule of law, it really works. People really want to feel like the city is working for them. Unfortunately, as evidenced by our voter turnout, I don't think that's the case. Of Renton's 42,000 registered voters, less than half voted in the last election. You have a real opportunity here to show that you, the city council, and the mayor listen and care about what the people think. If you don't like what the initiative says, that's fine. Uphold the law and send it for a vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll read your instructions. Very good. I'm David Keyes, last name spelled K-E-Y-E-S. I'm resident of Renton, also in the Highlands area. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, you're here tonight ostensibly to act, take action on this initiative relative to the sighting of the library. I'm certainly one of the people that believes the library should stay where it is over the river. And I take great exception to a lot of the comments that have been made about the structure of the library and about its usability as a library. I also take great exception to a lot of the very loose round numbers that have been used by estimates, in estimates that the city keeps referring to. As an architect, having prepared many of those estimates over the years, coordinated them, edited them, analyzed them, the kind of language that the city administration or the people that you have depended on, Mr. Mayor, have used relative to that building, the design of the building and the cost for repairing it are very close to being baseless without a great deal more information. It's rather difficult to compare an estimate for remodeling the existing library with construction costs, acquisition costs for building on a new site when no information is given, and when the actual comparison of the assets of each site are being ignored or downplayed in the discussion. I could go on on that, but I'd rather come back to the law tonight. The city administration, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Covington, you've asked the city council to decline or to reject essentially the Citizens Initiative. And I think it's important, because it gets lost a little bit sometimes in the letters to the editors, the initiative process is not a popularity contest. It's not a straw poll. And I think certainly all of you are well aware of that, regardless of how you may make your arguments. The petition process is framed by state law, and it both places a number of requirements on those people making the petition, and it places a number of limitations on the legislative body, which this council represents, that have to act on that. By reaching the point where we have certification from King County Library, excuse me, King County Elections Board, we've satisfied the requirements as far as the citizen involvement here, and you've had an enormous amount of citizen involvement. And I think it's probably good to point out that it's volunteer citizen involvement. You had a number of people volunteering for very long hours in this process. In any case, the state law also then places, as I said, places limitations on you as a governing body. You don't really have the option of declining legally to act to uphold the intent of this petition. You have, as I understand it, again, I'm not an attorney, but I have spent a fair amount of time going back through the law on this as well, you have the ability to either back off your present course of action, keep the library at its present site in which the whole issue becomes moot, or if you really feel that you need to proceed, and apparently you do, with the course you're on, the only other alternative you have, is I understand the law, is to go ahead and put it to a public vote. The issues that you brought up, sir, as city attorney...
Mr. Keyes, your five minutes are up.
Am I? Okay. Well, thank you.
Sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's okay.
Thank you very much.
Let's drop it at that point.
Thank you.
I'm Judy Tabak, T-A-B-A-K, Renton citizen. I am one of the 6,383 signers to the library petition and one of about 30 people that went out into the city, in all times, in all types of weather, freezing, rainy weather, to get the people's signatures and their voices regarding our Renton Cedar River Library. Many questioned me, why is the city doing this? We don't want our library moved. We love the River Library, and no other place could even be better. I am a parent, grandparent, and a former licensed daycare/ childcare provider here in the city of Renton. Last night, I talked to a few of the children who I had in my daycare to get their voices as children of their experience of going to the Renton Library. Here's what they said. "It's pretty and relaxing, open and inviting, really fun. We get our books, we got our books, and then we went out to play in the park." This girl is now a junior in high school. Child two, "I remember going down to, down there when we were really young. The whole location made us want to go to the library. It was the library of choice." This is a student at Washington State University. Child three, "I have a lot of memories from going to the library and then out to play in the park. You can't mess with perfection. It's a symbol of community. Don't fix what's not broken." He's a junior at Western Washington State. So, I'm here tonight to give voice to the children of this community, past, present, and future. They are the future of this city, and they deserve to experience what the children in past years have experienced in Liberty Park and the River Library in it. I hope you will listen to the children's voices. I'm here to represent them tonight. Thank you.
My name is Mike Glain. I'm a resident of South King County, a library user for 30 years since I moved up here from L.A. I'm here to speak to the council and advocate the allowing of the initiative and the issue on the location of the library to go to a vote, clearly from the previous speaker and from all of us. We know that the current library location is unique. I doubt that there is one in King County that's like that, one in the state, no, probably not one in the country. It is iconic. It is one of the few things that makes Renton unique. People come to watch. They come to watch the salmon. People know this, the citizens know this, you're all part of the community. People have lived with this for 30 years, couple decades at least. This is important to them. You need to allow them to make the decision of what to do with their icon. Thank you.
My name is Kathy Ozenkop. I live in the Renton Highlands. I've been a resident of Renton for 40 years. I am one of the 6,383 registered Renton voters who signed the petition that included the signatures of folks from all races, creeds, and colors. I spoke with many folks living in King County, Issaquah, and Newcastle. For years, they longed to use the Cedar River Library. Now that this library is part of the King County Library System, they have used it for the past two years. They feel hopeless in the struggle to save the library over the river because they live outside the city limits of Renton. Many of these folks also signed the petition, wanting their voices heard in spite of the fact that their signature would not count toward validation. Another segment of our population feels powerless in this process. These are the new immigrants who are on the path to citizenship and do not yet have the right to vote. I heard the voices of many of these folks in the Highlands at the markets, the post office, and the library during the petition-signature process. The Somali family, the mother brought the children to say thank you to me. All of the children stood quietly, and each took their turn to bow and say thank you. You would have thought I was an icon from a foreign, from a foreign country. The Ukrainian lady who came, "I vote, I vote, I vote. Where do I sign?" She was the only member of her family who could sign the petition. The others were not yet citizens. Or the man with the turban who came to me at Safeway and said, "Oh, I wish I could sign. I use that library often with my children. I can't, I'm not a citizen yet. How long are you going to be here? I know, I know people in my family who can sign, and I will bring them over." There was the lady with the veil. She signed the petition. She says yes, and I know several other members of my family that are also registered to vote. The Hispanic man, who shook his head, he could not sign, but he offered me a dollar, and I could tell from the vehicle he drove into the parking lot that a dollar meant a lot to him. I couldn't accept his dollar, but I realized that it was my duty to collect enough signatures to help this get put on the ballot. For these people who have no voice, yet they are, they are part of the 90,000 residents who are citizens of this great city, and they love the library over the river and the library at Liberty Park. There is also the child who saw the sign and ran into the market and said, in her native language, communicated with her mother. Her mother came out and said, "My daughter is telling me there is something out here I must do." And she says, "Yes, I am a registered voter, and I will sign the petition because we use and love the library over the river." There was a couple I met at the park. He won the lottery in Moldrovia. He is an attorney educated in Moldrovia. Here in the United States, he works for Dairy Gold. His wife is on the path to citizenship, and she brought him to the Safeway Market so that he could sign the petition. Parents of Renton students speak 90 languages. These parents and their children are English-language learners. These children are the interpreters for their parents. These new immigrant families frequently utilize the library over the Cedar River, and it supports a dual purpose: the Liberty Park and the library, the library for education and the park for recreation. These new Renton citizens reside in the United States for the democratic principles we cherish. The citizens encouraged me to save the library over the Cedar River with the petition-initiative process. It would be a serious breach of faith in the democratic process for the Renton City Council to fail to recognize the initiative intent and keep the library over the river or put the relocation of the library to a public vote. It is a citizen's right to petition their government and for their government to respond affirmatively for ballot measures. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jeanne Green-Crook, and that's G-R-E-E-N-E hyphen C-R-O-K, and I want to say I appreciate Mr. Law, the mayor, and the current council members for all their service that they do. But I have a little bit different slant on this. I am a local business owner, and I live in Monterey Terrace, and I was one of the ones that went out and collected all the signatures in the rain and sleet and hail. But I want you to know that my different slant on this is I worked downtown in Renton for 32 years, and 24 of those were with American Drapery, and it's on the corner of Burnett and Third. And when the Transit Center came in, we got a lot of crime, a lot of panhandlers, and it was not a really, they thought this was going to be a good thing for us. Well, it wasn't. But now we have to deal with it, and we need to move on. But I went with my friends and my family and other people in the community, and we are now asking that you please accept our plea for petition to keep our library where it is. Let us have a vote for it. It's close to the playfields, all the adjoining facilities there are nice. They've got the paths, and some may think that it's not as big as some want the library to be, but you know, from the Big Five location, it is considerably smaller and very limited parking. I can tell you, when I worked at American Drapery on Third and Burnett, we had experiences of damage and intrusive behavior of some of the panhandlers that brought to our community. They arrived on buses to do their dirty deeds and skip out on the next one. That was convenient for a quick escape. American Drapery had to lock the Burnett Street entrance doors because we were missing purses, coats, and anything of value. The transients now sleep in that opening, as they do in other areas down there, on doors. It could be our library door also. They urinate, they, it's disgusting. But they have now chose, American Drapery has chose to close their showroom to the general public and is open by appointment only. Their building, their building is for sale as they want to relocate. And we're not, we're going to lose a business because of the situation we have there. But they are going to move, and I don't know how long it's going to take till they sell their building because of conditions that they have. Haven't done this very often, as you can tell, but I'm very nervous. Anyhow, because I'm adamant about my feelings here, I want them to know that, or want you to know that when we were told the bus hub would be a great benefit for our community, we didn't realize what good we would have, that the bad comes with it. And now you tell us the library will be a good thing for us at the Big Five location? I don't think so. The Boeing building took long acres, and that was our community's heritage. And now you want to do it again with our unique and one-of-a-kind library. I have only one other question, and I just, I have grandchildren and children. Are you willing to take your grandchildren to the library, if it's at the Big Five, and go through the maze? My husband also had a real estate business at Pasco Realty on Second and Morris, and they sell all kinds of drug and drunken abuse, or drunken street, in the street and disorderly conduct. He called the police department. They were great about coming and helping him, but it's not a good area. And we've got a parking... And we've got a parking, a garage that's scary to go into also. So with that, I want to thank you for your time and listening to me because I'm rambling on, and I'm nervous as can be, but I appreciate you listening to me.
Thank you.
My name is Ben Johnson. I live in North Renton, and first of all, I want to say thank you for letting us go over the normal 30-minute allotment. That actually means a lot to all of us to be able to speak our mind, and I really do appreciate that. I don't know if a lot of us are aware of it, but other councils and mayors are not willing to do that, and I've seen that, and I do want to say thank you. I'm going to back step a little bit and just put the library out of your mind. Whether it was a good idea, whether it's a great idea, whether it's a bad idea, it doesn't really matter. A bunch of rabble-rousing citizens have collected a bunch of signatures, and they presented to you a petition that may or may not be, you know, perfect, but they've been, you know, vetted by the county and, uh, and, uh, I guess. And I just want to read the, unfortunately, this, the sort of Hobson's Choice you have. You really don't have much of a choice as far as I can read it. The RCW 3517-260 basically says that after the ordinance is submitted to the voter-registered voters for the city, the commission shall either, and it gives you two choices, choice number one, pass the proposed ordinance without altercation within 20 days after the county's auditor's certificate of sufficiency has been received by the commission, or, secondly, immediately after the county's auditor's certificate of sufficiency for the petition is received, cause to be called a special election to be held on the next election date. Simple choice. Now, with anything in life, there is leeway for finding an alternative, you know, to, you know, if somebody asks you to do something immoral but is technically legal, you don't do it. If somebody asks you to do something that's really, really wrong, somebody's life is in danger, but it, it's lawful, you still don't do it. Sometimes you take your lumps and you actually go against the law. What I'm suggesting to you is this interesting and fascinating petition, as flawed as it is, doesn't rise to that level of being so egregious that you back away from these two choices and do something else. Um, I, you know, from your standpoint, it's probably an annoying petition. It's, you know, remove, you know, puts up old wounds. It cussing the doubt your decision-making process. But as annoying as those are, those, that isn't sufficient enough to back away from the plainly written law in the state and do something else, in my opinion. Sometimes we can get, I, I do this myself. I get, uh, you know, something, somebody tells me I don't, something I don't want to hear or not prepared to hear it. I find all sorts of crazy places that kind of, I pick and choose and find where, where maybe I'm in the right, and I put those down on pieces of paper, and I would say to yourselves, don't do that in this particular case. Uh, it's a simple petition. It's, it's, the, the public has met the duty to bring before you, and I would suggest either do choice one or choice two as the law prescribes. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Stanley Jex, last name spelled J-E-X. I'm a resident of the city of Renton for 58 years, and never can I ever remember a situation quite like this, which brings to my mind the question, what is the real agenda here? If it's to serve the people of Renton, I think you have a clear mandate, and I was one of the petition signers as well, and I was one of the persons who went out and collected those signatures. And many people said to me, if I had known what the initiative meant when they asked us about joining King County and two libraries and, never was there anything said about our beloved, unique, totally unique in the United States library going away for whatever reason, none of them would have signed for that to go ahead. If they had known at the time, you would not have gotten anyone's support in the city of Renton. So, all we have here is a misunderstanding, and it's very easy to clear it up. All you have to do is put it to a vote, unless there is another agenda. I appreciate your time. I appreciate the job that you do. I served our country for 10 years in the Navy. I served in Vietnam. I appreciate your service. I thank you for your service. I thank you for my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Phyllis Forrester. I'm a Renton resident, and I have a little, will this do this over here? I didn't want to feel abused tonight. I became aware of a letter that you received from a library advisory council board person today with some unfounded, unfounded and inciting remarks. One of them was that the existing library would cost $800,000 to remodel. I answered this question once before for ex-councilmember King Parker. He asked me where I got my information. Right here's where I got it. I got it from the Renton Public Library Master Plan Study 2008/2013. On this, it says that it will cost, get to the right page here. I don't think you can read that, so it does, it's not very good to copy there. But anyway, it says that it would cost, um, downtown remodel would be 5,000, uh, 586,000. Highlands remodel, 261,000, for a total of, I went some other stuff in there, for 35,000, for a total of $882,000. Now, that's from the city's report. That's from the city's master plan. I didn't make those words up. I didn't make those numbers up. You did. And that's where, um, that's what the remodel would cost. Now, I think that it would be much better to remodel the current library for, I'm sure it'll be more than 587,000 dollars than to build a new one for 9 million. It's just more practical to say, no way can we do this to build a $9 million. We have a state-of-the-art library. We have computers. We have everything that a state-of-the-art library has. What else do you want? More plugins, that's for sure, but that can be fixed. Like you say, we already have the initiative, but I just wanted to correct that, that, because I did want you to know that that came from there. Also, should KCLS management threaten, which I understand is happening, legal action, if the library isn't moved to that Big Five location, please keep in mind, it is supported solely by levies and property tax dollars. The state legislature put KCLS in place in 1942, '43 to serve the public. Now, you don't turn around and sue the public because they don't build you a library that you want. That doesn't, that's not good, uh, planning on the part of KCLS. They've got their, their priorities a little mixed up with the taxpayers. Totally underwritten, the property tax dollars. So, you need to stop and look at, uh, the priorities that we need to have here and read your own reports, please. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I go to the desk? I don't think you want to see the top of my head, so. I want to look good for TV. A little different, uh, little different position down here than I'm normally used to, but I'm excited to be here, and I think it's wonderful that we have an opportunity to speak before you this evening. Uh, I had some prepared remarks. I'm, uh, going to change them somewhat.
Would you introduce yourself to the audience, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. King Parker, City of Renton. At any rate, uh, as I say, I had some prepared remarks. I think we're going to change them a little bit because I think we need to go back to what the council's initial decision was, which I'm sure you're all aware of, is that after a great deal of thought, I want people to understand a great deal of thought and consideration went into the study of exactly why at that time we wanted to join the KCLS system, largely because of the, largely because of the, a couple of things that were outlined in what I had in my letter to the editor. For instance, the cross-use. This is where we adopted an opportunity for our citizens to be able to go and use the King County Library System, and consequently, the King County Library folks come and use our system. The difference of the use of that was calculated, and it, uh, and that figure became considerably more, up in the several thousands of dollars. What that indicated at that time, that because our library perhaps wasn't meeting the higher level of standard that what King, King County Library System offered, is that it, people were using their system more consequently, and because of budget restraints that we're all aware of, is the, was the, uh, we could see that perhaps the handwriting was on the wall, and unfortunately, at some point in time, as use became less and less, and we just couldn't be able to afford, have been paying the cross-use fees back to King County that we'd be able to afford to keep our library open. Consequently, we joined the King County Library System. There was a vote. And, uh, and now I guess I'll get to some of my remarks that I have here. There's certainly one thing about America and its ability to have varying opinions, being able to express them in an open forum like this, so I really appreciate having that opportunity. There's been many points of view expressed regarding the current or future use of the downtown library. There's been a very vocal group who's very adamant about not moving the library, another group that supports the new library, as well as many from the local business community. One, one group of folks that I don't want you to forget about, and that is our silent majority. The folks who are sitting at home, the youngsters who use the library, uh, the folks we don't hear from, because they're out there. We have over 90,000 residents in our city, and, uh, we have a small portion of folks in reality that have come forth. God bless them. I would tell you that, uh, these are well-meaning citizens. They've gone out and they've put a lot of effort for, to be here tonight and to bring forth their petition. As much as I think that perhaps the petition has some flaws, as was presently pointed out by Ben, it's still a good petition, and it's certainly a, uh, it's a sounding board of what a segment of people in our community feel. However, I think you have to look at this in a different perspective. If, there's many consequences to the actions of not staying the course. Those consequences would be, could be a certain amount of money with both the downtown and Highlands Library are tied together in this agreement. I have a very strong concern that the new library in the Highlands, which is key to the redevelopment of this area, could be placed in jeopardy and not built because of budget impacts from the redirection of the downtown plan. This would be a huge disaster, and it's something for you to take into careful consideration because, remember, this was a package deal. I ask for you to look at those impacts and the big picture. The big picture being, the proposal to join the King County Library System was made. Information was distributed. Pros and cons were debated. There was lots of debate. There was lots of conversation about this. A general election was held. The election was approved and certified, and this is what democracy does at its best. So there were 6,000 and a few more than are here tonight on the petition, but the point of it is, it was a certified election. And based on that, you move forward. The council reviewed and approved by a majority of councilmembers.
Excuse me, Mr. Parker?
Yes, sir.
I'm really sorry, you know, I don't think I've ever had the opportunity to tell you that your time is up.
By God, five minutes went by. I did get a clap. You know where I stand, folks.
Thank you.
Dave McCammon, City of Renton, M-C-C-A-M-M-O-N. Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'd like to start off by saying that change is hard to accept. The discussion to change library systems into the relocation of the library building have been much debate within the city of Renton. Debates occurring both in the last few years and in the 1960s. Recent debates include the election for the annexation of the Renton Library to KCLS and a, excuse me, a petition on saving our library over the river. Prior to the election that affected library service in Renton, it was discussed about needing a new downtown library. There were many opportunities available to ask questions and to speak for or against the subject prior to any actions having been taken and to assist in making a major decision for the city. As with other elections, it is not known how an individual votes, and it cannot be proven that those signing the previously mentioned petition had voted for or against or not at all for the annexation of Renton Library service to KCLS and what led to their decision. But support has been made in an election by a majority of voters, excuse, that chose to make their decision on the direction of the library service in the city known. Just as there are claims that voters would not have voted yes if they were aware that the library would change locations, there will likely be claims that a voter would not have signed the petition if they were aware of financial difficulties they would put upon the city and themselves. It was a decision of a simple majority of those that voted to express their choice of library service in Renton. This election was voted upon by less than 32% of the registered voters in Renton, but this percentage was closer to the majority of Renton voters than was the one-sided petition of protest. It was pointed out difference between the yes and the no vote for annexation to KCLS was only 53 votes, but this meets the simple majority requirements, and the yes vote count was still more than the petition's certified signatures received after a second attempt, which passed by only nine additional signatures. I believe this petition to be nothing more than another try to understand, undercut the majority decision in the Renton City Council. The city cannot make decisions for all affected items by a popular vote, but must depend upon the city council that consists of Renton City residents who are elected by a majority vote of Renton citizens that chose to have their voices heard. It is time not to accept the aforementioned petition, but to move forward with the decision of the majority of Renton voters who took advantage of the opportunity to learn more and vote for the annexation to KCLS, its service, its services, and the new downtown library. I'd like to add an example of Renton making a change and moving forward in addition to the ones presented earlier to the city council. We would not have Carco Park and all that it adds to the community today if the city of Renton had not looked to the future improvements and disagreements while it relocated City Hall and Police Station from the Carco Park location to where it was located along the Cedar River shortly after the new library was built over the river. Renton has grown in population along with a city hall and police station at their current location. It is time to continue the forward growth of the city by making a change of the library to its new location and new building in downtown Renton and to enjoy the new and future usage of the city building over the river. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Bill Taylor, T-A-Y-L-O-R. I'm a resident of Renton, and, uh, one of the, whatever that is, one of the neat things about following Mr. Parker is I can just say I agree with everything that he said, but he didn't get to say it all. to say it all. You folks are all elected in part, I would assume, to make decisions for us. That's why we elect you. And with that comes an expectation that you will act on the votes that you take after you take them. I wasn't a particular fan of the annexation, library annexation, but it passed. You, you folks took your, your time about dealing with the issues that followed that. You went through a process, it was a public process, it was an open process, and you made decisions. What Mr. Parker didn't have a chance to say, which I think he was going to say, is the expectation is for you to act on the decisions that you've made. There are people, the silent majority, if you will, or those of us that were approached by petition advocates and refused to sign, that are not out here en masse because we assume that you folks will do your job as we elected you to do. Other people have spent money and made commitments based on the votes and the commitments that you folks have made. To not follow through on those would be a gross disservice to those other people in the city that are making investments in the downtown and trying to improve the downtown and to be a place where we all want to go. So I would just leave you with my hope that you follow the course of action that you've taken. I think it's great that you're listening to everybody that has something to say, but you've made your decisions, you took your votes. Let's move ahead with the library where it's intended to be in the Big Five location. Thank you.
Thank you.
This doesn't count as my time, right?
(laughing).
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 All right. Technical difficulties are over. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name is Ryan McCraven. My wife and I live in Renton. I wanted to talk to you a little bit about why we moved here. About a year ago, actually, last Friday was our home anniversary, our very first home. We chose to move here and we really did buy into your, your marketing worked, Renton being ahead of the curve, the progress that we saw over the years. We lived nearby in Seattle and down in Tacoma before that, and we saw the positive changes that have been happening in this community and that was why we moved here. And I see another positive change before us, which is what's, what the decision you guys are facing here tonight, which would be to move the library, to remodel the existing facility into a new improved community space. I think that, that is what Renton needs to do, is in the name of progress. Really, the reason I support the new library, as I said, is kind of an issue of modernity. You know, things change, we experience progress, things move forward. I think the analysis of square footage is flawed in one way. That would be like comparing the cubic inches of my computer at home. It does not make it better. If it does, if anyone's interested in it, by the way, I'm willing to sell it for you. It's quite large. I certainly would feel differently and perhaps more like those in the, in the audience today. If you're going to tear down the current structure, I would not be standing here saying, yeah, let's do it, you know, rip it down. I think the current location, though, has so much more potential to be than just a library. I think there's a lot of good uses that could be used for that building and I ask that obviously remain in the public trust. You're not thinking of turning it into a Dick's Drive and all of that would be great somewhere What this issue really comes down to tonight is obviously, as some speakers have mentioned, not the library itself, but what sort of democracy we live in, whether or not you want to be in a push-button democracy where the voters decide with a push of a button on every single issue, making you all obsolete, or if you are, if we're in a representative democracy with informed decision-makers who vet things through the public process, the public process we've been through. I believe in democracy and the public process and have nothing but respect for those who feel differently, many of who are in this audience here today. I fought passionately for issues I believe in in the past, but I know when to call it quits. This issue has already been tested by the voters twice. Once directly on the ballot for a replacement, I believe was the quote, and last fall, when it would have been timely and appropriate to have an official referendum, there was none, but there were a couple candidates who might have traded places that a few of you up there who were running pro-library. I think the voters and you have vetted this issue thoroughly enough. Will November 2012 be any different? If not, will another petition be filed? If so, what if those in favor of the move gather enough signatures to start this process all over again? When will it stop? Like most of the people in this room, I am not an attorney and I'm not qualified to give you legal advice. You have legal counsel for that. I ask that you trust your legal counsel. The public process has run its course. It's time to let go of the past and move on to Renton's future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Beth Asher. I live on Renton Hill, I have for a long time. I am one of the 6,383 that signed the library initiative petition. I'm also one of the people that stood out in the rain and snow gathering those signatures and I just wanted to touch on a couple of points. One is, there's no agreement that cannot be amended. The fact that we have an ILA, it's not set in stone. I checked and on MSRC Web where you post your own ILAs, including this one, there are 12 examples I got. One ILA's been amended 19 times. One amends itself automatically every time there's a new property annexation to the city. Your own score ILA has been amended and not to your benefit. We now participate more heavily with money in that particular ILA. The other thing is, the bit about the silent majority, there is a silent majority here. There's a big silent majority. Is anyone aware that we did a public disclosure request and got back the result from King County Board of Elections? The 280 people, 283 people asked to change their vote because they felt they had been misled or not understood the issues during that last campaign and vote. And going on, I would argue that unfortunately, this is a civil rights issue. There's no such thing as a push-button democracy and no such thing as our time running out. We are the government. We are the people. We have the right to petition and you have the right to listen. You have two choices legally. One is to accept the initiative petition, flawed as it is, and then try to work around the language to everyone's satisfaction. The other is to put it to a public vote. Why are you afraid to let the voters decide? It is our right. It's our civil right, it's our right of free speech. If you disenfranchise us, if you remove us from this process, then there is no process. There is no democracy. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause). Okay, Council, we're now going to move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Zwicker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move items D and E for further consideration.
Second. Okay, are there any other items that council members would like removed for discussion from the consent agenda?
Hearing none.
Yeah. I think you just gave a motion.
No, I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda absent items D and E.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Taylor, that council adopt the consent agenda minus items D and E. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Zwicker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The items I polled, D and E, both have to do with the initiative of the people regarding the library. Item D is information only, but it seems appropriate to have polled them both. Item E is the administration's recommendation that the council not adopt or put on the ballot the library initiative. That's the issue before us tonight. We've heard a lot of audience comment this evening and obviously people feel strongly about this topic. I ask for the council's indulgence for a moment. I have given this matter great thought and I have many potential arguments. However, I think I can make my position clear with one argument. When I was appointed and then elected, I took an oath of office that said, "I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of this office and that I will support and maintain the Constitution of the State of Washington and of the United States of America." Because I took an oath to support the state and federal constitution, I believe my analysis must begin there. Notwithstanding the initiative or the subject of the initiative, I, as a council member, cannot adopt an ordinance that violates the Constitution. The Constitution is clear that an ordinance that impacts existing contracts is unconstitutional. Therefore, independent of the initiative, I could not pass an ordinance directing the administration to violate contracts with KCLS and others. If I apply that reasoning to the issue before us tonight, I'm forced to reach the same conclusion. And let me explain how I get there. The statute seems to direct one of two options, either adopt the initiative as ordinance or submit it to the vote of the people for adoption as an ordinance. As I stated before, I do not have the authority to adopt an ordinance impeding contracts. Therefore, I do not have the authority to adopt this initiative as an ordinance as presented. They are one and the same, so I'm constitutionally barred from passing the initiative as an ordinance. If I submit it to the vote of the people, I reach the same endpoint. As a council member, I am barred from passing such an ordinance, so trying to circumvent my constitutional limitations as a council member by using the initiative process and a vote of the people is equally barred. Therefore, I cannot place this item on the ballot. I've struggled with the language of the statute and its apparent either-or language. I liken it to a fork in the road. Either I pass it or I put it on the ballot. But based upon my oath to uphold the Constitution, I can never even get on that road, let alone choose which fork to take. And with that, I move the council concur in the administration's request that we direct the administration to continue with its existing contracts and that we do not adopt the initiative or place the initiative on the ballot.
Second.
Mr. Mayor. Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Ms. Breyer, that council concur with item E of the consent agenda. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I disagree with Mr. Zwicker's assessment of the constitutionality regarding the petition by our citizens and I would like to propose a minority report moving that we do put the, this to a public vote. And I would also entertain additional discussion regarding that.
Is there further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Point of order. I would like to second Mr. Taylor's thoughts. I'm not sure if that's allowed by the rules.
While we have an existing motion on the floor, there may not be a second motion made according to Robert's Rules of Order. So you need to discuss and dispose of the initial motion.
Some further discussion on the motion on the floor?
Certainly. Did Mr. Taylor still want the floor?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Taylor.
I'm, I'm very disappointed at the route that we're taking to move this forward. I can say that I was disappointed when I saw that we had moved such controversial issue as a consent, item on the consent agenda. And I was perfectly poised today to, tonight, to recommend that this issue be put before the voters. We find ourselves in a very difficult situation right now and I need not go over all of the plethora of information that we've seen over the, the past year. It began without making a serious mistake on June 20th of last year, when it was very clear at that time that our voters resoundingly communicated to us in a very effective way that they were not happy with the path that we were taking for the reset in our libraries. We chose to ignore that, or there were those of us that did choose to ignore that and we put the train in motion on the tracks and have created the, the scene of events that we're faced with today. I find it sad when one of our residents have to tell us that they shouldn't have to, that they feel as if we're fighting them to the bitter end and it's not necessary. I don't believe it is necessary. I've done a little research and I've discovered that in the city's history of having the initiative referendum process, which extends some 40 some odd years, this is only the second time that our residents have felt passionate enough, angry enough, disappointed enough, frustrated enough, to come, come to us to complain and to ask us to make a decision, a choice. They're going to have to pay for, they're going to have to live with, that they are going to be impacted in terms of how their quality of life is going to be delivered through their lifetime and their grandchildren's. And I find it very interesting that during that first time, back in 2006, when we had a petition, initiative presented to us over the fireworks ban that we had placed and put into place the year before, that we had similar initial reflex from our staff in terms of looking at the sufficient petition that was validated by King County, if it had some verbiage flaws in it. However, I was impressed by the sense of the council at that time to move past that, move beyond that and to put it to the voters. Ironically, the petition failed. The proponent for that petition wanted to reinstate fireworks here in our city, but the voters came out and they spoke, and rightly so. Every decision that I make here needs to be informed by the people that put me here. When I applied for this job, I didn't fill out an application and get interviewed by a couple of people. I knocked on thousands of doors. I listened to people and my decisions are informed by my residents, the residents who live in this city. That includes citizens, that includes voters, and that includes people that are not citizens or voters as well. Someone mentioned, I think it might have been Mr. McCammon, that the, made an issue of the number of votes that the petition arose, which was 6,383. I might remind everybody that the votes to annex into KCLS was pretty slim also. Yes, it did pass by 53 votes, but the proponents to annex into KCLS was 6,395. So we're talking about a 12-vote difference, not a lot, and I don't want people at home to appear to think that there was a big margin in this. I might add also that that vote was a vote that was marketed through KCLS's voter pamphlets and the materials that they sent to all of our registered voters, which are some 40,000 plus folks throughout our city. This is a grassroots effort right here. These individuals did not even come into contact with all of our city residents and I think that it's a very understated representation of what our community really represents in terms of what that library means to this community. So I beg to differ there. I'm a former chamber man. Served on the Chamber Board of Directors for some seven-plus years, former chair. I get economic development. I'm a former business owner. I believe that the way we're going about it is all wrong. When you look at place-matter initiatives around the country where you see communities redeveloping and trying to find that magic pill, that, that, that perfect sweet spot that'll revitalize the community, it typically has four components to it. Restaurants, retail shopping, entertainment, and arts. Not a library. I beg to differ with that. I think fundamentally, that's flawed on multiple levels. You don't take a, a public icon, you don't take a, an amenity that people are attached to in a wonderful site, I'd be like, well, let's move the space needle down into, you know, a different neighborhood and see if we can, you know, revitalize this business district. I'm being a little silly here, but that's what it seems, it sounds like. You don't do that. I think we need to get creative and come up with a strategy, a long-term strategy that's going to make the difference that we need to see happen in our downtown core. I heard someone else say that, you know, you made your, voters voted, it's done deal, you're duly elected to make that decision and that's why we put you there. Well, part of that's true and that's why council people are given council manic powers that we can make certain decisions without having to come before voters. But on this issue, this needs to be directed and driven by our voters. There is history, recent history, where there have been initiatives that have been voted on that our residents, our voters weren't happy with and they've gone back to try to change it. 2010, the liquor initiative, that failed, but people weren't satisfied and so they put it on the ballot again and it passed. And now you still have people that are in opposition of that and we'll see what happens there, the jury's still out. But what about our library bond vote? That just happened a few months ago, that, that didn't meet the supermajority numbers to be passed, and I'm for that, by the way.
School bond.
School bond, yes. Now we're seeing that, you know, we're putting that on the ballot again. In fact, I voted for it today. So to say that we don't get do-overs, I don't buy that. If we miss it, you're supposed to let us know and we should have the broadness to say we want to get it right. Imagine a business looking at its customers and telling their customers that we're going to shove this widget down your throat whether you'd like it or not. Can you imagine that? I couldn't either. And as a elected official here, I view you as customers to the degree that I don't think that we need to be as insensitive, to the exception of allowing you to inform how we make decisions here. We need to be constantly trying to understand where you want us to direct your tax dollars to help you, to be a part of the process of building the city. You live in it, you own it, you hire us, you need to be a part of the process. Finally, I want to just read a final comment from the petitioner's letter that their attorney provided. I just like the wording of it. I think it, it hits the right spot, so I want to just plagiarize it. He says, "Placing the initiative on the ballot is good public policy. Amen. Regardless of the merits of the initiative, there's value in allowing people to express their views and there's value to the city in knowing the public's views. This is true regardless of whether the measure is valid or not. Public expression on a matter of public controversy is something the city should encourage. Placement on the ballot does not mean the city agrees with the initiative's message or agrees that it has the force of law if passed. The initiative can be a useful means for communicating to the city the public will, the public will. Assuming the city wants to know the views of the public, for all of these reasons, the city should place the initiative regarding the..." This is true regardless of whether the measure is valid or not. Public expression on a matter of public controversy is something the city should encourage. Placement on the ballot does not mean the city agrees with the initiative's message or agrees that it has the force of law, if passed. The initiative can be a useful means for communicating to the city the public will, the public will. Assuming the city wants to know the views of the public, for all of these reasons, the city should place the initiative regarding the downtown library on the next general election ballot. I would add to that. And fear of political liability that we have not explored thoroughly to renegotiate some of these contractual issues should not influence sending this, not sending this to a public vote. Thank you.
Excuse me. The council's trying to conduct business, and I appreciate the enthusiasm. We're trying to give everyone an opportunity to express their feelings tonight, but please honor the fact that they have some deliberation to do now and allow them to do that. So, Mr. Corman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I pretty much agree with Mr. Taylor's comments. I did want to address Mr. Zwicker's comments. Certainly, none of us want to write knowingly an unconstitutional law. But I think I just want to start out by reminding him, well, basically saying, I think he has overthought this. This is a citizen's lawmaking process. We're not used to the petition process in the city of Renton. As Mr. Taylor said, it's only happened once before. I happened to be on council at the time, and I did go along with putting it on the ballot. But this is no more our process than it is if the city of Auburn was writing a law and we felt compelled to get in and tell them how to do it. This is the citizens writing a law. It comes to us, under the RCWs, it comes to us for one reason, one reason only, that it gives us the opportunity to create our own ordinance that effectively accomplishes the same thing, or to let it go on to the ballot. If there's something unconstitutional about it, then that's ultimately, that can become an issue in the election. Certainly, if a side doesn't agree with it and thinks it's unconstitutional, they could say that in the election materials. We've seen that countless times in statewide initiatives, where that argument is used to try and defeat a statewide initiative. And then, ultimately, if it prevails and becomes a law, it's only the court that has the authority to decide that a law that's written by the citizens is unconstitutional. And interestingly, the court can't even do it until it's adopted as a law, because they're barred from making rulings on prior to items becoming law. So what we have to do is sort of ask ourselves, do we want to do our own ordinance, or do we want to put it on the ballot? Frankly, I'd like to write our own ordinance. It's clear to me that there's a lot of interest in this, but I'm also very willing to put it on the ballot. I have a feeling that's probably a little more of a compromise position. But while we're talking about statewide initiatives, which all of us are much more familiar with because those come up every year, I thought it was interesting to kind of look at some of the other RCWs that cover those. When you do a petition statewide, you need 8% of the voters from the last general governor's election to sign on to the petition. For referendum, you only need half of that, 4%. The bar in the city's pretty high. They have 33% of the voters from the last mayoral election have signed on. That's four times the number that you would need to put any ballot measure on for statewide. It's eight times what you'd need for a referendum. So I think we're past the small, you know, vocal minority. I think we're way past that. In fact, as Mr. Taylor pointed out, it's just 12 shy of the number of voters that joined us to KCLS. And frankly, I know 12 people that voted to join us to KCLS that don't want this library moved. I actually know quite a few more than that. And so what we're really facing right now is a citizen's process, a citizen's initiative, that we need to either write our own ordinance or just basically get out of the way. And I wanted to just hit on a few other items. Certainly, the comment about that the council should do what councils do, we're elected to make decisions, and I agree. I mean, we do driveway easements, we do sewer line sizing, we do a lot of really mundane things that frankly, all of you are probably glad you're not down here sitting through some of these meetings. But occasionally, big things come up. For instance, the last time the library moved, when it moved to the Cedar River site, and contrary to some of the discussions, that actually was a ballot measure. The League of Women's Voters worked with the Chamber of Commerce. The ballot had failed the first time, and the second time, they went out with a shiny new plan for this great new library that spanned the river. The location had been debated and debated, but when they finally came up with that design, it went to the ballot and it passed. And the citizens got the library they wanted. This particular time, there's been a lot of talk that when we joined KCLS, well, that was the voter speaking, that they wanted the new site. And frankly, I just have never accepted that. And it's not well-known, I think there's some confusion, I'm not going to call it misinformation, but there's confusion, because those of us that were on council are well-aware that after it went to the ballot, we started having discussions about the citing of a new library. And the key is, that was after it went to ballot. And then, we had discussions during executive session, which we can't discuss executive session when there is still taxpayer interest in having that information remain confidential, but it's no longer confidential information. We were looking at different sites. We didn't want property owners to know that their sites might be considered. We didn't want prices to go up, so we talked about different sites. We had splitting during those executive sessions, just like we have now. We had a rating scale, and we all kind of argued about it. We had many people suggesting, I mean, we had some people suggesting we move to a different site, we had other council members suggesting we stay at the same site. As I remember the scoring, the Big Five site and the Cedar River Library site were very, very close. We had arguments about how we were doing the waiting, whether we were giving enough value to the park. And then, finally, the majority of the council ruled that we decided on the Big Five site. Later, that was all after the election. So to say that somebody who voted in that election knew that this was moving to the Big Five site or anywhere, it just can't be true, because we didn't know. And in fact, the replacement library concept was, you know, do we add a wing onto the existing library? By the way, the replacement, when we talked about the replacement, it was because voters were saying, hey, when we pay taxes to KCLS, they're gonna be higher than we're paying now, why are we paying more for equivalent service? And the notion was, well, let's get some more library space in there. But Liberty Park was still super high on the list, you know? And so, no, when somebody voted, they didn't know they were voting to move it. And so I think we just need to quit even pretending that that was the case. So I think with that, I've taken a lot of airtime. I do want to just circle back and say, I appreciate the city attorney's eager way that he wants to look at the constitutionality of this. He may get an opportunity if it goes to the ballot and prevails, but his opportunities to make all his arguments about case law, they shouldn't even, we shouldn't even give him any time. We don't know. How do I listen to the city attorney's case law and make a decision about whether that case is relevant or not? I'm not a judge. That's not my role. It's a judicial power. Only the justices are qualified to make those kinds of decisions, and this is citizen's lawmaking process. So with that, I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Corman.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
First, I'd like to ask Mr. Taylor to, he made a reference that made it sound like the school bond issue was through the city of Renton, the election, and the fact that it's elected on again, and I just want, would like you to clarify that that is not a city.
Let me clear that misunderstanding for you, Ms. Breyer. No reference that it was a city issue. The reference simply is do-overs. If voters make a decision regarding, you know, a ballot measure or a referendum, and it passes or fails, doesn't mean that that's the end of it. And we just saw that happen. We just saw the school bond measure fail several months ago, and it is back on the ballot again.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that you clarified that that wasn't a city of Renton issue, that was the school district issue, because I think you...
What, school district, city of Renton isn't the issue. The idea is voters having the right to decide whether or not they're happy with the outcome of an election. And it's a constitutional right that they do have, that they can't, this is a change.
I understand. You just, when you were saying it, it was a...
I hope I've cleared it up.
All right. One of the things I wanted to say, and I know this was my position earlier too, when we went forward with a library proposal, is that, you know, I realize that there's 6,000 people that signed the petition, but there's 90,000 people in the city. And I wasn't convinced before, and I'm not convinced now, that we truly have a representation of what the community at large might want. So I certainly respect all the waiting in the cold and rain and all of that to state your point, and I think that's wonderful. But I also know a lot of people who believe in going forward with a library at the new location. And I just don't want that diminished either, that there's a lot of people out there that do believe that the new location will be a good location for the library.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Breyer, were you finished?
Obviously, I've been interrupted, so that's fine.
Go ahead. You can just go ahead and...
So anyway, I just feel really strongly, one of the things that came up through this process is, as some of the speakers said, we have a fiduciary responsibility. And we had to weigh the costs associated, and there's a lot of misinformation that I keep hearing coming back. But we had to look at what the cost impacts of remodeling the existing library, the time that it would have to be closed, and the cost of all of that. And it actually was a much more expensive process to remodel and update that than it was to build a new building from the ground. And, you know, it's often the case in commercial buildings where it's a whole lot easier to go in at the beginning and start something new than... So that was something that we had to consider and balance that information with the decisions that we might have on it. So one of the other things I'd like to comment on, I'm sure most of you are familiar with the pool downtown Renton. That was put to the voters, and it didn't pass. We were able to, we continued to feel the need that that was something that the city really needed to have, because the old pool had been, Henry Moses Pool had been closed for several years. And I think that this is kind of in the same vein. I mean, we're elected to balance all the information given to us and make an informed decision, and I believe that we have done that. And I'm sorry that there are people that are disappointed with that decision, but I stand by my vote that weighing all the information that we had on both sides, that it was the right decision.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I would just like to, and I appreciate Councilmember Breyer's comments, there was a comment that she had made about not being convinced that, you know, the majority of people want the, what our petitioners are asking for. I would simply offer that the simplest way of finding out what that would be, would be to put it on the ballot.
Yes, sir. Is there any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
And I would just like to add that I was here for the Henry Moses Pool vote. That did go to the ballot, as Ms. Breyer said, but something I think really important about that is it did actually get 57% voter approval. 57% of the city of Renton voted to tax itself on a bond issue to pay for that new pool. The pool had been designed by a citizens committee, and we had 50%, 57% support. That wasn't the 60% needed for a bond issue, so it went down. However, we reached the end of the year and we had a budget surplus. And knowing that the majority had clearly spoken in favor of the pool with a 50%, 57% voting to tax themselves, we said, hey, we could do this with the budget surplus and just take the existing money and pay for it. I've not seen 57% come out with a public vote with a bond issue that says, would you like us to build a new library at the Big Five site? If somebody, you know, thinks that we've had that, they're mistaken. So we haven't had a similar situation.
Thank you, Mr. Corman. Any additional comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
Well, you all know where I stand, and I've been the same place from day one. And if I remember right, one of my first comments when we were looking at that initial possibility of putting the KCLS annexation to the vote was, why would we have this piece in here that we'd move the downtown library? You all know how beloved it is. And I believe that when the city did a survey way back when I first started, it might have been 2005 or 2006, that it came out loud and clear that the downtown library was beloved and considered iconic. On one hand, I'm sad we're here today, because I see division in the city that I love and I work so hard for, and you all do too. On the other hand, I have to admit that I'm glad we're here, because I wish this would have been where we were before the annexation vote, that all of this information could have been out there. I knew it, and those of you that talked to me knew it. But we had a real hard time in getting that out with an equally grassroots effort in a very short amount of time. Some of the comments that have been made today, any legal battle is a lose-lose, and I agree. The taxpayers, if the city decides to take this to court, the taxpayers are going to pay to fight against the people. And the people apparently are going to raise money to fight back. And we just don't need to be there. Ms. Breyer said she's not convinced that 6,383 people truly represent the 90-some, 90,000 population, and so let's put it to a vote and hear loud and clear. If the proponents to move it are so convinced that it's a good idea, then they can make their case to the public for that campaign, just like the "Don't Move It" campaign can do. And I guess I just have always wondered why the city and KCLS don't celebrate this unique, one-in-the-world library over a river that can be remodeled, and it can become a tourist attraction. I think it already is. When you talk to the people that have worked at the library, they get people from around the world that will walk in and say, I heard about this. They get architecture students from all over the world that come to take a look at what happened and that this was created. And so I just see that we should be celebrating that and using it as a draw to bring people in, and use the Big Five site, which now the city owns, to be something that the community can get on board with and be as excited. And I heard a number of you mention the arts community. I've been hearing about that for a couple of years from one particular artist that gets my ear all the time at the farmer's market, and he's got lots of good facts and figures and examples to share with any of us that want to know that. You people have worked very hard, and I thank you for that, because you care about the community, just like all eight of us sitting up here do. And so I say, go ahead and let's hear from however many registered voters there are, and know without a doubt that what we're doing is the best. And I believe whichever way that comes out, the community will get behind it, and whichever building is left empty without a purpose, the community will get behind in supporting that.
Thank you, Ms. Palmer. Yes, Mr. Person.
Well, I'm gonna come at this at a little different tack, because most people that know me know that I look at the dollars and the cents. And we have a limited amount of money to do to libraries. We've already looked at the cost of what it would cost to remodel the library building, and I know there's those that don't agree with us. But when you start talking about fish windows and fishery permits and the length of time that it would take to get all the permits necessary, and the shortened work hours that they would have on the remodel underneath that library, it's gonna cost more, it just has to. And we have already spent over a million dollars on... And we have already spent over a million dollars on the Big Five site and the planning for a library there. And that was done with council approval. The majority of council approval approved those expenditures. So here we are. If this initiative had been attached with saying, the voters saying, we'll add $7 million, I would look at it a lot different. But we have, we have the renowned experts in libraries across the nation that tell us that even if we spent the necessary dollars on that library, it would not fit their needs. It would not be what they would consider an up, the most up-to-date library. They, we also have a contract with them. And yes, contracts can be changed at the will, with the agreement of both parties. And KCLS has already indicated to us through their attorneys that they're not going to willingly change that contract. So we could be bound to building, have a building there and other sanctions. So I, like I said, I'm looking at it as purely financial, because if it were an emotional issue for me, I'd say, let's go put it on the ballot. I personally, if everybody didn't want the library remodeled, I'd be happy with no remodel, because that's what a lot of people have been saying. But that's not what the route that this council and the voters took over the last two years. So to me, I can't put us in financial jeopardy. And we're not talking about a small amount of money. We're talking about some millions of dollars of jeopardy. So we could end up jeopardizing the Highlands Library, the quality of the Highlands Library, and everything else, because we only have a limited amount of money that we budgeted for those programs, and there isn't any more. So I see that as a danger, and for that, I encourage us to not put it on the ballot.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer?
I just want to comment, when the decision came up to put it to vote with, about going to KCLS, the reason that we did that was because we were running out of money to run the library. And the time, the financial burden became even greater even after the vote. I venture to say that had we continued to have the library, that it would be closed by now, because the money just really wasn't there. The cost impacts kept growing each year as more and more of our citizens went to KCLS to use their services, and we were charged for that. So if I can remind council members, it really was an issue that we could see in the near future that there would not be money for the library, and we would have to close both of them.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Carmen.
Yeah, with the subject of financial jeopardy, with all due respect to Mr. Person, who I love, I just have to say, I, you know, I'm starting to get more nervous about where this is going, because I can tell with a group of people, the organization, the eloquence of their comments, the caliber of their attorney, that they're going to follow what the RCW says is the remedy if we don't do what we're instructed to do under the RCW, which is, the commission shall either, one, pass the proposed ordinance without alteration within 20 days after county auditor certificate of sufficiency, or two, immediately after the county auditor certificate of sufficiency for the petitions received cause to be called a special election to be held on the next election date. Those are the two things we're allowed to do. There's nowhere in here where it says, have the city attorney make an opinion, and then have the council re-debate whether it's a good idea. It doesn't say that. And then in fact, if we don't, if we don't do it, it says, any taxpayer may commence an action in the Superior Court against the city and procure a decree ordering an election to be held in the city for the purpose of voting upon the proposed ordinance if the court finds the petition to be sufficient. And again, the certificate of sufficiency's already been provided. So where we get into financial jeopardy, and I can see exactly how this would play out, is if this council insists on adopting the somewhat nebulous resolution that we don't do anything, which is contrary to the law, the next step will be the court. Unfortunately, and this is where the financial jeopardy comes in, this is programmed right now. I don't see anybody offering to wait to stop further development of this new library. I would hope the council would indulge us in doing that, because if we get down the road and we get further along with the design, and we get to where we've broken ground, while this makes its way through the court, we may find that every bit of money that this city has allocated for the Highlands Library and to remodel the downtown library is wasted in court fees and last-minute changes. And that would be an absolute disaster, especially when we have right in front of us a petition that all we have to do is say, let's just put it on the ballot. Give everybody what they want. Give everybody a voice. Let the business community do like they did the last time for the last library. You know, promote their idea. Let the citizens participate. Let them make a case. Let everybody discuss freely the constitutionality. But do all that instead of having Larry Warren duke it out with their attorney in court while we progress towards what's certainly going to just throw away all of our millions of dollars that we're trying to spend on remodeling and the new Highlands Library. You know, my wife was on the Renton Library Board for seven years. I homeschooled all five of my kids. We're so familiar with that library. We love that library. I just can't imagine that we would allow, because of a fear, I would ask this of council members that don't want to put it on the ballot. If you're so sure this is such a small minority of people, why not just let it go? Couple months, it's behind us, no court. On the other hand, if you say, no, we don't want to let it go to ballot, we'll fight these guys in court, that tells me, and it tells this community, that you do not believe it's a small minority, because you're choosing the hard way. It tells me that you believe that this is in fact a majority, and that you're going to try and do something different than the majority. But this majority are the people paying for it. They're our bosses. Furthermore, all of that is philosophical, because the law tells us, we have to either adopt the ordinance tonight or put it on the ballot.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
Well, we're going to, we'll end up in court one way or another. And I, for one, would be gladly instruct the city to stop, hold back, never let them break ground or start a building, which we have the authority to do when it comes to the contract time. So I don't want us to go that far. But when, I'm still convinced that we have a contract, that I respect our city attorney's opinion, and if he says it's illegal, he has 40-some years of experience in municipal law and government, that I, so you know my opinion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
And I agree with and respect what Councilmember Person has said, that we will end up in court one way or the other. However, that being said, that if we are going to end up in court, I'd rather that we are in court on the side of our residents, protecting their interest and their rights, and an effort, a grassroots effort that was well-done and well-organized. And it clearly provided the information that I asked for back in June, which is a poll that we were unwilling to entertain. They went out and they put a poll together themselves of registered voters, and they far out exceeded my expectations about that. So if we're going to end up in a fight, I want that fight from this council to be on the side of our residents.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Carmen.
Yeah, I, you know, when I researched the state initiative process, which I haven't ever actually proposed a state initiative, obviously I voted for and against them, probably even given campaign contributions. But when I researched that, I noticed there's a lot of information about that, very little about the city process. But a general, the law basically describes how it reflects the state process. And as a reminder of the state process, probably some people, some of you on council may know this, perhaps some people in the audience, but what happens is, you get the 8% of the people that voted in the last governor's race. As I mentioned before, we have 33% that voted in the last mayoral race that signed this. When they bring forward the petition, it goes to, it goes to an office of financial management that actually makes a determination about what the cost of that petition would be, so that the voters, when it goes to the voters, can know exactly what it would cost. And I think this one should go to the ballot, and we should negotiate with King County, find out what their costs have been for staff to support the Big Five location, and capture that. You know, if we in fact feel like, well, they're out 150,000 bucks because of money they spent, put that in the ballot initiative. Put it in there and say, you know, that's part of the information given, that the city spent so much on design at this stage, here's the present design of the Big Five one, the state also, or the city will also owe, if this passes, 150,000 or whatever to King County. Put it in there. Let people weigh it against the $9 million that if we continue. And let them compare it to some good financial analysis of what the library over the Cedar River would cost to remodel. But let's also include in there the fact that we've committed, that you all, not just the three of us that voted not to move the library, but everybody on this council committed that we would repurpose the building over the Cedar River. And let's just be sensible about the fact that if it doesn't work as a library, if, without remodeling, it won't work for anything else without remodeling. So let's include those finances in there as well. The other thing, when a petition comes in, a state petition gets a neutral financial analysis, which we could do ourselves, or we could hire somebody to do it, and take into account, are we going to be out a lot of money to King County? Let the voters consider that. But the other thing it does, it goes to the Attorney General's office. Do they look at the constitutionality of the petition? I mean, after all, we have, actually, we have a city council member, who I greatly respect, Mr. Zwickler, who actually works for the Attorney General's office, interestingly enough. But when a petition goes to the Attorney General's office, it gets evaluated for one thing, the title. Does the title reflect for the voters what is actually being proposed? That's the only thing they look at. I'm sure that there are probably a majority of petitions that go for statewide election that the city, the Attorney General's office would go, you know, this is unconstitutional. If this gets accepted, it's not going to pass constitutional muster. But they don't reject it. They review every single one of them. They look at the title, they decide the title reflects it, and they put it out to the voters. So we could actually emulate that. We're new at this petition stuff. We could do a thorough job, though. We've got some great access to attorneys that could do a job on this petition, putting it on the ballot, that would reflect well on us in history, when people look back and decide, whatever happened to the library, well, the council did it with a clear majority, with a clear mandate, with good information. Or we can look at a few years of being tied up, having the thing wind its way through court while we make split votes about whether to spend money on the next step, and who knows where that's going to go. And I think this is a very, very serious decision we're making. I've been on the council 18 years. I would say that this is probably the most serious decision I've seen this council ever have to make. And the way we decide tonight, and I would just ask people, the opinions that we had in the past, you know, we had differences of opinions. Those are behind us. In fact, it even got mentioned about the election. You know, I, yeah, people ran against some of the council members here. I like to think that the community weighs a lot of the decisions that the council makes. I mean, the library's just one decision. So just because a council member got re-elected doesn't mean that the person who voted for him automatically agreed with him on that one decision. So we can't, we can't assume anything from that. All we can do is just say, when all's said and done, if we go forward, are we doing exactly what the people that put us in this office want us to do? And are we confident in that? And if we are, you know, we can't fail. But if we're wrong, it could be a disaster. So we should just, we should put it on the ballot tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
And I would just like to close with, at the end of the day, we're able to govern at the pleasure of our voters, who put their trust and confidence in us, who vetted us as we campaigned, and they wanted to know how we processed information, how we would make critical decisions. And of course, no one had to campaign on this issue. Well, I guess some of us had to this past election. But clearly, what residents really want to know, and voters want to know, is, can I trust you? Can I trust you with my interest, my best interest? Can I trust you to do the right thing in a difficult situation? Can I trust you to not be influenced by hidden agendas or small minorities with special interests? Can I trust you to look at all of the information, to make an impartial, balanced, objective decision in a fair way? And will you create that roadmap for me, to bring information to you, to communicate my issues with you? Will you listen? Do you want to learn? Do you want to understand, you know, what it looks like through my perspective? And these are the reasons why people elect us, they choose us, when we can really get the sense of what's important to our community. I'm not a person who is motivated by fear, but I will say that I have a belief that if we miss this opportunity to pivot and do the right thing by changing the process and allowing this to go to the vote, to the voters, if we miss this opportunity, it calls into question many future decisions that we're going to make. Fundamentally, it calls into question, you know, how we govern, and whether or not we can be trusted with information and arrive at the right decision. And so I would, again, one last time, let's get a sense of deja vu here, urge my fellow council members to not be shortsighted, but to really understand the resounding information, the evidence, if you will, that our petitioners have put before us, to give them an opportunity to weigh in and make a decision on this issue. Let's send this to a vote.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Brennan?
Could you refresh my memory what the cost of an election is?
It depends on what time of year that it is held, if it's piggybacked on other initiatives.
Ninety thousand.
It's, I think it'd be 25,000 to 30,000, would it, for...
About, no, I think the last one was about 90,000 for the last general election.
General, oh, okay.
Thank you.
No further questions?
Any further discussion? I think I want to make just a couple of comments, because I think there's been some very good dialogue from both sides tonight. It's been a confusing issue. There's absolutely no question about that. The administration has been in a position of following council direction and moving forward with the library at the location under contractual agreement with KCLS. But clearly, has there been some confusion with voters? I think there has been. Has there been some confusion with voters today in terms of the initiative? As, you know, I've had people call and ask, why are you tearing down the library? And, you know, we're not tearing down the library. We're looking to position it for another use. I think the only thing I wanted, because you've received a lot of information, you've received a lot of information from the public, certainly from the administration, and certainly amongst yourselves. And I think there's been a lot of valid comments made on both sides. Whatever the decision is going to be tonight, we are going to, as an administration, support the wish of the council, and we're going to work hard to try to work through any of those processes. So, you know, as you prepare to take a vote, I guess I wanted to say, think about, you know, what it is that you feel really strong about, that you want to do. Base your vote on that, and we'll move forward.
People would want to let...
So with that, I'd like to... So with that, I'd like to, is there any further discussion from council?
People would like?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded into approve item E on the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Zwicker?
Aye.
Ms. Breyer?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
No.
Mr. Corman?
No.
Mr. Taylor?
No.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, the ayes have it, four, four ayes, three noes.
Okay, the motion carries, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
Could I, or proposing a move adjournment for 10 minutes? Get up, stretch our legs, or we're going to power through.
Go.
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 Okay. All right, next item on, I'm sorry. We're not?
We're doing a reset.
No.
Sorry, not adjourned, but recess, excuse me, recess was the?
All right, next item on the agenda is unfinished business, Mr. Zwicker.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Committee of the Whole has the committee report.
Committee of the Whole Committee Report, 2012 School Impact Fees. The Committee of the Whole recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adopt an ordinance to approve impact fee collection changes and capital facility plans for three school districts within the city of Renton as follows. Collect the requested impact fee of $3,568, a decrease of $240 for each new single-family home on behalf of the Issaquah School District. And continue to collect an impact fee of $5,486 for each new single-family home, and $3,378 for each new multifamily unit on behalf of the Kent School District. And collect the requested impact fee of $6,392, an increase of $82 for each new single-family home, and $1,274, an increase of $16 for each new multifamily unit on behalf of the Renton Municipal District. The committee further recommends that the ordinance regarding this matter be prepared and presented for first reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Zwicker.
I move the council concur in the Committee of the Whole Committee Report.
Second.
The move by Mr. Zwicker, second by Ms. Breyer, the council concur with the Committee of the Whole report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Breyer?
Yes, the Finance Committee has three, three reports.
Finance Committee Report, Approval of Claims and Payroll Vouchers. The Finance Committee approves for payment on April 2nd, 2012, claim vouchers 310844 through 3111140, six wire transfers and one payroll run with benefit withholding payments totaling $4,606,409.61. And payroll vouchers include 752 direct deposits and 64 payroll checks totaling $1,574,538.59. This is signed by the committee members and substitute.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I move that council concur with this Finance Committee Report.
Second.
The move by Ms. Breyer, second by Mr. Person, the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Finance Committee Report, Fee Waiver for the Use of Carco Theater for the Summer Teen Musical. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve a fee waiver request in the debt amount of $4,850 for the use of carco theater and associated staff costs for the production of the 2012 Summer Teen Musical. This is signed by the committee chair member and substitute member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
The exciting part about this is they told us that the summer play teen musical will be guys and gals, guys and dolls, sorry. With that, I'd like to move that the council concur with the Finance Committee Report.
Second.
The move by Ms. Breyer, second by Mr. Person, the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Finance Committee Report, Fee Waiver for Liberty Park and Riverview Park Picnic Shelters. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the fee waiver request in the amount of $280 for use of the Liberty Park and Riverview Park picnic shelters on May 2nd, 2012, during the 2012 Crop Hunger Walk fundraising event sponsored by the Renton Accumatical Association of Churches. This is signed by the committee chair member and substitute member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I move that council concur with this Finance Committee Report.
Second.
The move by Ms. Breyer, second by Mr. Person, the council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, Mr. Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Public Safety Committee has a report.
Public Safety Committee Report, City of Renton Hazard Mitigation Plan. The Public Safety Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adopt the new City of Renton Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is a complete revision of the plan adopted in December 2003. All city departments participated in developing the revised plan. The plan categorizes the hazards that may impact Renton, assesses Renton's vulnerability to those hazards, and identifies actions to take, to reduce risk. A full review of the hazard mitigation plan will be conducted every five years. The committee further recommends that the resolution regarding this matter be adopted. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
That would be Public Safety.
I wasn't going to do that again.
Second.
The move by person, second by Ms. Palmer, the council concur with the Public Safety Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Prince, we have a Utilities Committee, do you want to have that read out?
Sure.
It's Greg's.
Yeah. Yeah, it's Greg's.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm just looking at your name on this. Okay, we'll move on. Ms. Palmer?
Yes, I have two committee reports.
Community Services Committee Report, Planning Commission Appointments. The Community Services Committee recommends concurrence in mayor law's appointment to the Planning Commission of Mr. David Fleetwood for an unexpired term expiring on June 30th, 2013, position formerly held by Ed Prince. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I move council concur with the committee report.
Second.
Ms. Palmer, Mr. Fleetwood is here. He actually sat through the entire thing if he wanted to be introduced.
Take the vote first.
The move by Ms. Palmer, second by Ms., Mr. Prince, the council concur with the Community Service Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And Mr. David Fleetwood is here, would you like to come up and, to the podium, if you'd like?
Usually our meetings are more controversial than this one.
You weren't warned about a 10-minute stage. No. Well, first off, thank you. And I wasn't prepared to actually speak, but thank you for the opportunity, and I hope to do the job to the best of my abilities. But we appreciate it, and I just want to say thank you for being willing to serve on, on the committee, we really appreciate that.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fleetwood. And then I have one more report.
Okay.
Community Services Committee Report, City Center Community Plan Advisory Board Appointments. The Community Services Committee recommends concurrence in mayor law's appointments of the following individuals to the City Center Community Plan Advisory Board, for terms expiring on April 30th, 2013, Mr. Chris Ayer, Mr. Doug Baugh, Ms. Alchelina Benedetti, Mr. Michael Bowen, Ms. Dana Roqueks, Rocheks, I'm sorry if I'm doing that wrong, Roche, Mr. Rodney Swift, Mr. Brian Van Houten, and for terms expiring on April 30th, 2015, Mr. George Daniels, Mr. Jerry Cavish, Ms. Shasta McKinley, Mr. James Stanek, Ms. Sybil Turner, Ms. Suzanne Thompson, and for terms expiring on April 30th, 2017, Mr. Reggie Ometi, Ms. Nancy Eklund, Mr. Mike O'Donan, Ms. Francine Sevitz, and Ms. Kim Sweet. This report is signed by the committee chair, vice chair, and substitute member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I move council concur with the committee report.
Second.
The move by Ms. Palmer, second by Mr. Prince, the council concur with the Community Services Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Now, is there anybody out there in the audience that I can't see your heads, that we just named that was just appointed?
Back.
Back there?
We got a couple.
Why don't you just come up and introduce yourself real quick? This is the first of our Community Plan Advisory Board assignments, and they will be serving anywhere from two years to five, it looks like. So I want to thank each one that was willing to invest their time in volunteering.
My name is James Stanek, S-T-A-N-E-K. I've lived in downtown Renton for 16 years. I appreciate the opportunity to get on an advisory board. Most of us that are on that list have passions about what we want to see happen with downtown. It's interesting that the chance to be here and get acknowledged for this is the same night that this great debate went on about the library, that, kind of inseparable. I would say that the passion you saw from some of these people about the original library, I don't want to see that passion disappear because of some of the decisions made here tonight. We need people who are passionate about the city. I come from northern Ohio originally, I know how bad an inner suburb can get, and we're nowhere near that. There's a lot of good things that have already happened in downtown, and there's a lot of cultural things, there's, there's neighborhoods where people are living within walking distance already, you've got things in place here, so that we realize this is years and years of change that are going to have to take place. But the potential is enormous, and, you know, obviously I have a passion to be part of this, but I hope that those that have the passion for the original library don't lose their passion for working in the city and with the city for what they want because of decisions that were made here tonight. So don't turn away the passion of people, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you.
Is the microphone?
This is very high, very high tech.
We managed to burn out the microphone.
I'm very loud, just comes with the big body. My name is Francine Sevitz, and I didn't expect tonight to be able to say thank you for being allowed to be appointed to this position to work with the city and all your future plans. I've had the privilege through working on the library steering committee, looking into the future, what that building can be used for, and, and studying the different plans in the city. We were given a little bit of each one of the plans that the city has in place for the next to 1225, or 2025. That's a huge, huge amount of, what do I want to say? You're, the infrastructure of the downtown city of Renton is so, is going to be exploding with the growth of this city. It's, I think, the fourth largest city in, in the state of Washington at this point. You're the new growth center, and I want to be a part of helping to plan and develop it so that everybody is happy. But I'm also one of these people that believe that you need change, you need to analyze what can be done to help make this city more viable. So I thank you once again, and I promise I'm on for five years that I will come to every meeting unless I have surgery. So, and once again, thank you so much for allowing us to speak, I thank you.
Thank, and thank you for serving, we appreciate it very much.
And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Palmer, and Mr. Corman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a Transportation Committee to, report to present.
Transportation Aviation Committee Report, Rainier Flight Service Lease Extension and Rate Increase. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve an addendum to the 2011 lease with Rainier Flight Services for the second floor of the 790 Building and ground lease tied-on area to extend the term from one year to March 31, 2013, and increase the rate by $454.49 annually. The committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the lease addendum. This is signed by the three committee members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move the council concur in the committee report.
Second.
The move by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. Person, the council concur with the Transportation Committee Report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
That's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Utilities Committee has a committee report.
Utilities Committee Report, Solid Waste Contract with Waste Management Amendment Number One. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve Amendment Number One to the Solid Waste Contract with Waste Management Incorporated to revise Section 3.3 compensation adjustment to use the Comptumer Price Index for annual contract or compensation changes and provide a one-time lump sum payment based on the actual dollars increase incurred by the contract for June 2010 through December 2011, concurrently estimated to be $36,000 for changes to the state's business and occupation tax rate. The committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the contract amendment. This is signed by the committee member and substitute member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I move that council concur with the Utilities Committee Committee Report.
Second.
The move by Mr. Taylor, second by Mr. Corman, the council concur with the Utilities Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Taylor. Moving on to resolutions and ordinances, we have one resolution and one ordinance for first reading.
First, the resolution, a resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, adopting the City of Renton Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
The move by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Zwicker, that this resolution be adopted as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And one ordinance, this is a budget amendment ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending the City of Renton fiscal years 2011 through 2012 by annual budget as adopted by ordinance number 5583, and thereafter amended in the amount of $37,139,384.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Breyer.
I move this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
The move by Ms. Breyer, seconded by Mr. Person, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, thanks, Bonnie. Moving on to new business, Mr. Zwicker.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to announce a Committee of the Whole meeting for Monday, April 9th, beginning at 6:00 PM in the Council Conference Center. We have one topic, and that is economic development strategic plan briefing. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Breyer.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Prince?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have no new business, but I'd like to refer to the Public Safety Committee, make a motion to refer to the Public Safety Committee briefing on the downtown cameras that are going out for an RFP.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Zwicker, that the, that the Public Safety Committee be briefed on the new downtown cameras that'll be installed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, Ms. Palmer?
Yes, the Community Services Committee will meet next Monday, which is April 9th, at 4:45 in the Council Conference Room. Just one item on the agenda, and that's the Community Services wrap-up. And I think that's for last year, because I think there's no way they're wrapped up for 2012.
We hope not.
No. And then I just wanted to mention that a week ago Saturday, was it the 24th, whatever your rotary caper was, over at the Renton Airport, they had another one of the women's Fly It Forward. And I'm not sure if it was a competition this time, you know that when they did it in December 31st, 2010, we received the award for the most female-friendly airport in the United States. We lost to a Canadian for the most in the world. But on, a week ago Saturday, they flew 255 participants, most of them men and girls. There were a few boys, they did let boys go this time. So that is a new record, and apparently we're waiting to hear back how that is with women aviation, and I'm not sure if that's just the United States or, again, worldwide. But yay for us in Renton. Our little airports turned into a dandy little airport. And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Corman?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Utilities Committee will be meeting Monday, April 9th, at 5:15 PM, and we will be discussing the utility bill leak adjustment. 5:15 PM, and we will be discussing the utility bill leak adjustment policy. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So that brings us to audience comment. Is there anybody who didn't have a chance earlier to address the council? Please give your, yeah, I didn't come up, well, if you haven't been up before, we welcome you. If you haven't addressed the council before, please come up, give your name and city of residence for the record.
My name's Karen Hensley. I am a resident of Renton for about seven years. Hensley is H-E-N-S-L-E-Y. I would like to make comments on the library system. I did not sign up in advance, so couldn't make my comments before. I voted for the KCLS annexation, and I would vote for it again, but I am against the library moving. I was willing to trade those off marginally. I was delighted to see the petition go through and see these people, you know, try and do that. I offered to help on the petition, didn't necessarily work out. So, but I am really appalled at the initiative process being put down. I feel like I have been put down here, and I will now fight this will. I will help it go to court if I can work with these people to make it. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Counsel, are you interested in listening to people who have already testified?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Hi, you've already heard me. I'm Beth Asher, and I just wanted to say how ironic I find it that some members of our city council made such a heroic push after only 72 hours of deliberation, when you had 20 days to deliberate the issue, to invalidate the legal right of citizens to petition and all volunteer effort, when tonight, we heard that this is the month of the volunteer. I find that completely ironic. Please be aware that by rushing to invalidate the initiative, you have now crossed a boundary. This is no longer just an issue of whether a library will move places. This is a civil rights issue. You have given the volunteers a slap in the face. Okay, that's fine, but you have also denied us our legitimate voice in the legislative process. This is our civil right. We Renton residents have a valid right to free speech, the right to petition. To refuse to acknowledge this, to exclude us and disenfranchise us, I'm sorry, but I feel that just tramples on all the principles that our country was founded on and is governed by. I really feel that the issue has become much larger, much, much larger, and I'm very sorry for it.
Mark Martinez, I live in the Renton Highlands again. So I actually had a conversation with my wife earlier today about this, about paying for the legal costs for this, and I'm going to actually forego getting new tires on my 1997 Jeep Grand Cherokee to help contribute my portion of legal expenses to try and do what the city of Renton, the citizens have asked you to do today. And I really do wish that I could have been on the council's side with this, and it's unfortunate that I'm not. And so you're going to spend part of the $1.7 million city attorney fund to fight this court battle, and I am going to spend the money I had allocated for new tires for my Jeep. Other people are going to spend money that they had allocated for vacation, maybe sending their kids to scouts, or whatever the money comes from. They're going to have to pick money out of their budget. We don't have a $1.7 million budget. I don't have a .07 million budget. So I am significantly limited on the financial side, as well as, I would just assume, the rest of the citizens who are participating in this. On your side, however, you will have the KCLS library system, who I would sure would be contributing to any sort of legal costs. So it's, I don't know, is this David and Goliath here? I'm not quite sure that, if that's a good analogy or not, but you definitely have the purse strings, and we definitely have the voters. Thank you.
Again, I find myself here, I'm Jeanne Green Crook. Been a resident for 30 years, and I want you to know, I will campaign and do anything I can do to get my grandchildren to be able to go to the same library that I've gone to. And I can only see the only ones that's going to make money here is the attorneys, and that's not a win-win situation for any of us. But I will absolutely go out and campaign and get any kind of monies I can get to go towards this. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you again for allowing me an opportunity to speak. I have to applaud the council for taking the time, giving us the time and the opportunity to address each one of you. As council member Corman alluded to, in his 18 years as it that you've been on the council, this is probably one of the most weighted issues that you had, an opportunity and a responsibility to address to the people. I'm very disappointed that our newest council member, Mr. Prince, did not voice his opinion or give us an indication as to how he felt or how he came to the decision that he has made to vote on the majority. I'm also a bit disappointed that as a city, the administrative arm of the city has opted to lobby the council member very heavily, and I have seen some of the correspondence that have come through. This is no longer a people's process when we see this type of thing going on. When we talk about the costs of the new library, it really has not been disclosed to the public what the real costs are. And when we talk about the real costs, Mr. Person, Mr. Zwicker, Ms. Breyer, Mr. Prince, we talk about the costs that the taxpayers are bound to hold on the repurposing as well. I spent many months on the steering committee, the Library Steering Committee, and our very first meeting was a meeting of debate and discussion about what that library building might be should the people's efforts not produce the desired results. I figured if I was going to be as passionate about keeping the library, that I should put as much energy into its repurposing should that happen. After that debate, the first meeting we had, the successive meetings that we had every month, the city paraded in front of us its master plans for the city and culture, or the arts and culture, its master plan for the Tri-Park libraries, its master plan for the museum. And we did not have any legitimate debate with the people. Mr. Avery, I'm going to stop you at this point in time. You didn't serve more than one or two meetings- Not true. -with this steering committee, and I'm going to, I'm going to stop you right now. We had a, we had a group of Renton citizens that worked very hard for many, many months on that steering committee. Now, it has nothing to do with whether the library is moving to the Big Five or not, and I just can't have you talking about and denigrating the process of those people. I'll yield, I'll yield to that, Mr. Mayor, and I apologize. My point, what I was trying to make is, is that the cost to the taxpayers for repurposing that building has not been weighted into the cost of the library location, because they go hand in hand. The city has agreed that they are going to keep possession of the building, that they're going to repurpose it, but there's going to be a cost involved with that, and the taxpayers are bound to pay that burden. That is all part of the library move, and so that those costs needs to be entered into that. Thank you again for your time this evening. I know it's late. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Erica Ritchey, spelled R-I-C-H-E-Y, and I just wanted to take a moment to comment after giving you guys the chance to make your decision. It's one I deeply respect, and I am very thankful for all the hard work and effort of many years that you guys have put into this decision. As a member of the Renton Library Advisory Board, I too have spent many, many hours chatting with folks in this community about this decision, what's to be done, and many who don't understand why this process continues to be, attempted to be stalled or delayed by the will of a committed group. Over the last few months, I have personally been approached many, many times while I'm trying to do business in Renton by people trying to get my signature on this particular petition. To gather my signature, I personally was told that the current building would be demolished, that the renovation would cost an insanely low number. It varied all the time, but it was between $600,000 and $800,000, which I'm a remodeler of our home in Renton, and I would love to meet that contractor if that person did give a bid for that. And I was also told, you know, when I mentioned a possible closure, any renovation would cause a closure at that facility, when it's had such a huge spike in circulation since we annexed a KCLS, I said, what about all the folks using it now? And I was told by one of the people in this room, actually, who spoke tonight, that what they would do was just open half of it, remodel the other half, and then move all the materials over to the side and remodel the other side of it. These are all things that I was told directly, and, you know, when I, still, I felt very bullied at all these opportunities to put my signature on this paper with signage that said "save the library" and made an emotional, one person made an emotional appeal. I was carrying my three-year-old daughter in this car, and said, don't you want her to have a library? And yes, I do. I want her to have the best possible library that she can have in this city, and I appreciate the historicness of that building, and I am all for keeping it in Renton. I know that's the plan, and doing something great with it, but I want the best possible library. It's so important for going forward. And I feel like, you know, I have a master's degree in public policy from the University of Washington. I have 10 years leading nonprofit organizations. I do feel like I've considered this issue. When I refused to put my signature on, I was told that I was uneducated, that I didn't understand the issue, and I should just go read some things. And I feel like as a member of the Renton Library Advisory Board, and with my background, I've paid attention very carefully, I haven't felt a single shred of respect from these groups. I've had negative things posted about me on the internet, things said to my face, maybe not, but I've never felt a sense of respect that I've actually educated. I've looked at the issue, and this is my decision. It was the same as the one when I voted to annex and get two new facilities, state-of-the-art libraries for the city. It's what I want my tax dollars to go to. So thank you tonight for the members of the council who respected that original vote and respected what we asked for at the very beginning, which were two new state-of-the-art facilities. So thank you for that respect. I finally feel it from you tonight.
Thank you.
We, the people, know why the 2010 annexation, annexation vote passed by the very minimalist number of 53 votes, but it was a deciding vote anyway. It was because of the information, misinformation coming from the city's administration itself. Mr. Peach told me who was responsible for the wording on the, in the explanatory statement that appeared on the 2010 ballot. It came from within the city itself. I won't name the names that he told me. If people would like to take a look at the public disclosure site to see where the donations came for the new member on this council, they would be quite amazed and very enlightened as to how much this city administration wanted the vote that happened tonight. It was a four to three decision. We knew it would go this way. There is a vote coming up for three council members next year. As just a reminder, we'll be active. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Julie Abraham, a lifelong Renton resident, and I've always, always been proud of the city and the progress that we've lived in. However, you know, growing up in Renton, going through downtown Renton, as a little kid, you would play, "Don't step on the crack." Now in that particular part of Renton, it's, "Don't step on the urine, or condoms, or feces left by the transits." And that's pretty much the game we're going to be playing with our kids and grandkids when we take them to the new library. If that's the progress that we're heading towards, then it's not the same Renton that I grew up with, and I'm very disappointed. Thank you.
I was here about two weeks ago, and I, just like, same, that night, tonight, I came from my son's baseball game, which they won three to two by tonight. Go Athletics. And I shared-
I'm sorry, please state your name and city for the-
Richard Bray, B-R-A-Y, and I live in the Renton Highlands. And I shared last, two weeks ago, about the Cedar River Library and how it has impacted my family, my five kids, over the years, and how it has been such a treasure in our community, where our family and other families and people of all ages could go to not only read books and grab books and be able to go then play in the park, or go on the trail, or my son was even, who played the baseball game tonight, we played, we were part of the summer league in Renton that he was part of, and we would get books there, all in one place where city residents could exercise their minds, their hearts, and their souls. With your vote tonight, you have ripped that away. I am so disappointed in this vote, so disappointed. And on this, and tonight, I wasn't here, but I understand according to the order that you were voting a proclamation calling this Volunteers' Month, and yet, one of your first acts that you've done in this month, where you've just passed this volunteer, is to squash a volunteer initiative, was what was about trying to help better the city. I'm very disappointed. And the Renton Reporter had an online poll of people today, and 76% of people were saying, "Keep the library." I just don't understand why you have not listened to the Renton voters and the people. You could have easily put it to a vote and settled it, and now you've caused disharmony in the community. I don't know how that's going to ripple out, but you could have prevented it. I'm very disappointed. This didn't need to happen. It could have been voted for everybody, settled once and for all, and everybody could have moved on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Before, before our last speaker, I just don't want to miss an opportunity. Excuse me, ma'am, for jumping in like this. I just don't want to miss a chance, because we often adjourn immediately afterward. I have a feeling, based on the comments of several people speaking tonight, that there will be litigation coming. And I just want to say, before that happens, because once it happens, we will start running into executive session, won't be able to say our piece without potentially affecting the, the city's case, I just want to say that we should treat this right now as, these people, as a, as a threatened litigation, just like any, anybody that's threatening litigation, we should do everything possible to work with them swiftly to figure out what remedies there may be. And I would fully expect the city to do that. We've got fiduciary responsibility as a council. Let's not let this instantly turn into a big lawsuit. I know, you know, as we've talked about, $1.7 million for our own city attorney and the community, you know, the tires they buy from our Renton merchants, the restaurants they won't be going to because they'll be paying for this. We need to do the best we can to keep a lid on it, get it done quickly. In the end, we all know if we go to court, we end up having to finally have conversations while we settle anyways. Let's try and settle sooner rather than later. The other thing I want to point out is that one, one person mentioned, and something I hadn't thought about, the potential for civil rights litigation. If civil rights litigation occurs, we end up paying the, if we're the losers, we end up paying the winners court costs. And I have no stomach at all to go that way. And, and I know as soon as the lawsuits get filed, we're going to be kind of under a gag order, what we can say, but one thing I do want to know is, once the legal costs approach, what the cost of the election was going to be, I want to know that. And then I want to know what's been done to, to try and mediate this dispute legally before it ends up in some kind of a courtroom drama. So just please consider that my, my request to the administration. Thanks.
My name is Catherine Ploue Smith, P-L-O-U-E-smith. I'm also a member of the Renton Advisory Board, the KCLS Library Advisory Board. This is very emotional. I've lived in Renton 17 years. I'm originally from Europe. I'm originally from Europe. I know debates are passionate everywhere. They're definitely passionate here. I love Renton. I have a lot of friends. I have actually friends on both sides of the issue here. I know that it comes down to, I hear a lot about democratic process, and I totally respect that, and learning about the United States and your constitution and how you, you know, how government is done. But I also want to say that I have been involved ever since I've lived here in the city, in various groups, the school district, PTA. I'm a mom, and I believe that the more family involvement, the better our kids are. It's hard to cover all the issues tonight. What I find a little sad is, I've been involved with this process for four years now before annexion to KCLS, and we had a lot of information then. We have had very, very, very few people ever calling us, coming to meetings, asking to read the information. We've sat with Betty, our former library director in Renton, in meetings where we're talking about how many more services are going to cut. We can't make it. I'm raising kids. We, a lot of us are. We're talking about $9 million, millions and this and that. I think the focus has to be really on the investment into the future. The building that we have is outstanding. I walk my kids everywhere downtown Renton in strollers. I know a lot of business owners. I've been at Liberty Park. We're talking crime and unsafe areas. Well, Liberty Park, after a certain time of the day, is definitely not the safest place to be, and I would venture to say a lot of the people involved in the Against movement for the last four years probably don't get out of their home much after 5:00 PM, if that. We need a lot of people to give their time to this city, to our kids, to our school district. If only 15%, 20% of the folks involved tonight in this discussion and for the last several years would only show up at board, you know, board meetings and come to our schools and volunteer. I can give you numbers. We need mentors. Renton Community Foundations, the people. We are going to build Renton by investing in Renton, and it includes building, and it includes being closer to Trend Center. My daughter, my youngest daughter, went to the daycare that is currently at the Trend Center, the Chinese bilingual daycare that's there. They walk their children every single day there. I know so many families who've had their kids there for the last five years. I walk there. I live three blocks away. This is my neighborhood. I take offense when I hear people talking about urination, this and that. Oh, sure, it happens, but the more engagement you have, the more visible you are in your community, the more positive you are to make a change, to build the future. We need to invest. KCLS has the highest circulation number in the United States right now. It's amazing. The spike in circulation in Renton is due to the fact that they offer services that we didn't have before. You have to think of other people than just yourself or the past 50 years of your life. You have to look to the future. You have to look to what is technology, ride the wave, and make sure you're part of it, and you give your kids everything, and yes, books, put the books in their hands. But what I see with investing in this future libraries, the Highlands will greatly benefit, no question. Downtown Renton too. We're going to get a new Skyway Library, an extended Fairwood Library. East Kent is going to have a new library. Newcastle is being built. This area has so much richness, let's turn this into a positive. And I believe that a new building downtown in the old Big Five, which I used to shop at, by the way, gives us some access to, it's closer to transit. Sound Transit is working on a new rapid line from Burian to here, Renton Landing. How much of you know that? That new rapid line would allow even more traffic. Look at the high schoolers, look at the exchange of population. You have to be positive and build this in. It is an investment for the future. Every investment costs. Every entrepreneur knows that when you invest, you put yourself on the line, but you have to really also respect, so we're talking democratic process, I respect it, I'm learning about it as a foreigner. I also know a lot of families at our schools who want to understand how things work, but the library is key to knowledge and education and growth, and a building downtown will not take away from the river. That building will still be there. It's a fabulous place, and I think we could build that into an amazing complex together with a skate park, Carco Theater, and outstanding trails and parking. So thank you for listening to all of us, and I surely hope that a lot of people will look deeply into their hearts to also see the needs. We need them. I would like to see these people come to our schools tomorrow and give their time to our kids because we have a lot of needs in Renton for volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Howard McComber, City of Renton. I kind of go along with Randy. I think one of our biggest concerns right now, I know all you people, and I happen to know every one of you, is tremendously interested in this city, and you're all trying your very best to do the right thing. The problem is, we don't all see the right thing the same way. That's all. But everybody here is trying to do the right thing. I think that we need to work closely, see if we can work out some compromise or something that can be done so that people can relax the death grip, because I see some problems here. I see some real problems when these guys come in with a petition. They have, they've done their job, they've done their petition, they've done the things that need to be done. There's something has to work out here where we can work together. And I know you guys have tremendous creativity. I respect every one of you. Every one of you up here does their part to help this city. We, Larry doesn't want to have this business. He's, that's something he doesn't want to have to face. He will face it. He's a bulldog, he'll do what it takes, but he, just to suit, we did something else with that, with those resources. So I think the thing to do, in your own way, there's a way to work this out so that you can, you can solve this and diffuse it to some degree. These people have, of course, the biggest concern that I have tonight is that they showed up with a petition. They showed up with a petition with a lot, it's pretty clear. Something's going to have to work. We're going to have to have some sort of compromise. Nothing's wrong with an honest compromise. Somehow, somewhere, I think this very sharp group, because this is the sharpest municipal body in the state, just it is. And I know you all are men and women of goodwill, and so I just implore you to see what you can do to find a way to get through this thing. There's going to be a way that we can solve that problem that we have. I can't say anything else, but I just think if you keep trying for a solution that wins, that these people won't have come in vain and will have the thing solved. The library is not my biggest concern here. My biggest concern is, is the city and freedom and how we deal with it, and I know that Rich feels just as solid about his constitutional thing as Randy does about his, and to tell the truth, I don't know, but I know that it can be worked out. So if you'll work on it, just keep working on it. I think we can come up with an answer that will work, and I'll be praying for you guys.
Thank you, Howard. Move we adjourn?
Second.
A move by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Zwicker that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, returned.[1778.95]